Meeting is called to order. This will stand with the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you read the statement of certification of the meeting?
The meeting has been advertised according to sunshine law.
Please call the roll.
Chairman Beniro.
Here.
Mr. Conti.
Here.
Mayor Malham.
Here.
Mr. Banda.
Here.
Mr. Bow.
Here.
Mr. Graziano.
Here.
Ms. Waman.
Here.
Ms. Inovarado.
Here.
Mr. Zangary.
Here.
Ms. Mettelford will be here in a little bit. She is not at this time. Mr. Guyan.
Here.
Mr. DiLorenzo.
Here.
Mr. Herrick.
Present.
Ms. Tavito.
Here.
Could I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of Thursday, October 14th, 2021?
Some more.
Hold on. Thursday, January 13th, 2022, and Wednesday, January 26th, 2022, special meeting. You want to separate it? You want to make a motion separately for each one or just? All right, let's do the motion separately. Thursday, October 14th, 2021.
Some more. Second.
Please call the roll.
Chairman Beniro.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Mr. Bow.
Yeah.
Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Ms. Waman. Ms. Inovarado.
Yes.
Mayor Malham.
Yes.
Mr. Zangary.
Yes.
Mr. Guyan.
Yes.
Could I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of the Thursday, January 13th, 2022?
Some more.
Please call the roll.
Chairman Beniro.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Mr. Bow.
Yeah.
Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Ms. Waman.
I am staying.
Ms. Inovarado.
Yes.
Mayor Malham.
Yes.
Mr. Zangary.
Yes.
Mr. Guyan.
Yes.
Could I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of the Wednesday, January 26th, 2022, special meeting?
Some more. Second.
Please call the roll.
Chairman Beniro.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Mr. Bow.
Yeah.
Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Ms. Waman.
I am staying.
Ms. Inovarado.
No part.
Mayor Malham.
Yes.
Mr. Zangary.
I'm staying.
And Mr. Guyan.
Yes.
Bill lists, they were delivered via email dated February 10th, 2022, and March 10th, 2022. Make motion.
Second.
Please call the roll.
And this will be for both, correct?
Yep.
Chairman Beniro.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Take no part.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Mr. Bow.
No part.
Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Ms. Waman.
Yes.
Ms. Inovarado.
Yes.
Mayor Malham.
Yes.
Mr. Zangary.
Yes.
Mr. Guyan.
Take no part.
Resolutions to be memorialized, there's none at this time. New business. We have PB 2013, 705-757 Main Street, block 1001, lot 3. Belleville Industrial Center, Lincoln Equities LLC. Preliminary investigation to determine whether the study area should be designated a condemnation area in need of redevelopment. Apology to present their findings to the planning board.
Yes, first name Chris, last name Colley, C-O-L-L-E-Y. Okay, great, terrific. Thank you, members of the board, members of the public, for allowing me to be here this evening. My name is Chris Colley. I am with the planning firm Topology. We were hired by the township to conduct this preliminary investigation for this property along Main Street. We have a report which was placed on file several weeks ago at this point. Also a presentation which I'm going to walk you through in your 10, 15 minutes if you indulge me. Really, the purpose of this presentation is to, one, give you a little bit of an overview of the property. Two, to explain to you what we're doing, what we're studying. And then, three, explain to you how we evaluate the property as an area need redevelopment. I'll say it's a very narrow scope of what we're tasked to do here. There are specific criteria that the state has laid out in terms of what is or is not area need redevelopment. And our study is attempt to evaluate the property against those criteria and determine whether or not it qualifies. Okay. All right, so a little bit of introduction, because we've been here before and I suspect it's some of the same members on the planning board. You might recall, my colleague Phil and I were here back in February of 2019. We made a presentation very similar to this one, speaking about the same property, evaluating the same criteria, and making a recommendation at that time that the property qualified as an area need redevelopment. Project was sort of stalled after that point. We never returned. The council never took any action on the recommendation of the board. And actually, I should say, the board never even made a recommendation. We didn't conclude the testimony. We didn't conclude the cross-examination process. We were asked by the township several months ago to sort of revive this study via new resolution. We re-examined the property fully. We looked at whatever changes have happened since 2019. We looked at new files that were available. We looked at, we did a new site visit back in December. I'll show you photos from that site visit. I'll just say generally, very little on the property has changed conditions-wise since that point that affected our findings. However, we thought it was important, rather than just sort of reciting the old report, to repair a full new report, reconduct the testimony and re-deliver this presentation this evening. So just sort of process, this is my last little bit of process. It's a very regimented order of steps that need to take place in order for a property to be declared in need of redevelopment. Starts with a resolution at the council. As I mentioned, the council passed a resolution authorizing this current study back in August of 2021. Since that time, we conducted due diligence of the properties, reviewed all files, we went to the site and took pictures. Ultimately, we prepared a report which was placed on file on January 21st. We're here this evening for sort of the second to last step, which is presentation of findings to the planning board. Ultimately, at the conclusion of this meeting, the planning board will hopefully either pass a resolution to accept my recommendations, reject my recommendations, and then ultimately, the governing body will take the final step and they will be the ones who pass resolution to determine whether or not the property qualifies. So I've touched on a bunch of this before. We reviewed all the records that we have and we can go back to that later if you would like. Just a little bit about the study area itself. And I'll zoom through this. I always feel weird in towns because you all probably know the property better than me, at least in terms of like where it is. But that's the property that we're here to talk about this evening, 705-757 Main Street. Sort of located up in the northeast corner of town, one parcel off the Nutley border, near the river. It's a single property, 15 and a quarter acres or so. You'll note, you know, while this is a single property, it's comprised of many buildings, many operations going on on there. Historically, the site, based on our research and our understanding, was a single user, federal leather company. Over time, and really over the course of the 20th century, it's sort of transitioned from that single user into a variety of different users. There's been environmental contamination on the site over that time. And, you know, today, as you walk around and you'll see a bunch of pictures, you know, it's a mixture of a variety of tenants and the buildings are really in a varied state. Most of them, as we're going to find in a couple of slides, are in disrepair and substandard conditions and things of that nature. Worth noting, in late 2021, the property was sold by Belleville Industrial Center to a subsidiary of Lincoln Equities Group. So just a little preview of what we're going to see. You know, these are those old buildings. These are the federal leather buildings that have been repurposed in a variety of different ways, fallen into disrepair in a variety of different ways. I won't linger on this slide because you'll see those photos again. Okay, so as I mentioned, like, we're here to do a very specific thing, right? We're just evaluating this property against specific criteria that the law lays out. There are eight of them. I'm only going to talk about three this evening. Criteria A, criteria B, and criteria D. I'm going to walk through each of those three criteria one by one. Those are the three criteria that we found this property met and those are the three criteria that we recommend to be designated as an area need redevelopment under. I'm going to read them in full, so I'm not going to linger on this slide here. Last note. The courts have like laid out pretty specific processes that need to be undertaken for this designation. And municipalities have an obligation to consider not a quote record that, they must establish a record that contains, quote, "more than a bland recitation of the application of the statutory criteria." And that's why we're up here talking about details and showing photos and I'm showing maps and things of that nature. All right, so me to the presentation, property evaluation. As I said, we're going to recommend that this property be designated as an area need redevelopment under criteria A, B, and D. So criteria A. Criteria A really deals with the condition of the buildings and whether or not those conditions are conducive to unwholesome living or working conditions. So I highlighted some of the language that we found to be relevant, that we referenced in the report. I'll just, I just want to call out a couple of things. One is the generality of the buildings. And I think that's important on a site like this where there are many buildings. Our finding is not that every single building on this site is substandard or unsafe. That's not the conclusion. The conclusion is the generality, meaning the bulk of the buildings meet the sum. It's a condition. Are substandard, unsafe, dilapidated, or obsolescent? Those are the four that we focus on in a manner that's conducive to unwholesome, in this case, working conditions because it's a commercial property. So some of the arguments that we've outlined in our report, and I'm not going to show every picture in there. I'm not going to sort of read every sentence or every argument, but I would like to give you a good sense, is obsolescence. And what we mean by this, in the case of this site, is it's a single user site that over time has been converted into a sort of multi-user site without necessarily the same types of improvements that we would expect to see in a modern facility for doing that. And how that shows itself on site is things like sort of lack of centralized trash collection, confusing circulation patterns inside or between uses, and other things of that nature. Substandard is a little more apparent for the observer. We see substandard conditions on these buildings, like broken windows, deteriorating building elements, a building that has collapsed in the time since our last investigation. Buildings that are not up to modern standards or current standards. Dilapidated buildings, very similar, broken windows, sagging roof lines, cracked and compromised foundations. And then lastly, and this one is one that is really apparent as you walk around, you know, buildings have been left exposed to the elements either through holes in the roofs, right? Or holes in the windows, or holes in the walls, and that leads to mold growth, things of that nature. And we find those to be conducive to unwholesome working conditions. So all of these we find to be conducive to unwholesome working conditions. I'll very quickly sort of page through some images here. This is a structure that's collapsed. I believe this structure has collapsed since the last time that I was on site. This is clearly a building that is substandard and dilapidated and conducive to unwholesome working conditions. This is a building that, you'll see it a little bit better with picture on the next image, but that's exposed to the elements, so there's water coming in. That contributes to mold growth, I'm sorry, not on that subject. It contributes to mold growth, contributes to generally unsafe conditions. This is a different building, but you see sort of, it's a similar condition where it's been exposed to the elements. There's mold there. There's a variety of debris on the ground. These are tripping hazards, right? These are not buildings that you could safely work in. This is the same structure again. You sort of see exposed wiring from the ceiling. You see debris laying around. You see mold growth along the base. This is a separate building. This is along the, I guess, the north side of the site. Again, this building is exposed to the elements, water dripping in, cracked floor surfaces, exposed wires, broken glass, things of that nature. And all of these we believe to be dilapidated and substandard conditions that are conducive to unwholesome working conditions. More of the same here, debris exposed to the elements. So as I said, I wasn't going to show everything, but generally, those were the key arguments that we included for criteria A and it's our conclusion that the property meets the criteria A condition. Generality of buildings, substandard, unsafe, dilapidated, obsolescent, in a manner conducive to unwholesome working conditions. Okay, criteria B. Criteria B, I won't bore you too much with, maybe already have. Six and a half minutes, pretty good. Criteria B, there's two pieces to criteria B that we use in our report, one of which deals with untenantable conditions. So buildings previously used for commercial, manufacturing, or industrial purposes that have been allowed to fall into so great a state of disrepair so as to be untenantable. And for us, like, we interpret the definition of untenantable to mean that it cannot be readily reoccupied to the use that it would be leased for. So some of the, just pull the definition apart. The property has buildings that were previously used for commercial, manufacturing, industrial purposes. The history shows that, the authorities show that. So we find that piece to be satisfied. And then we see a variety of untenantable conditions throughout the property. A lot of the stuff you saw in my pictures for criteria A, collapsed roofs, building elements, entrances or exits that you can't get in or out of, buildings exposed to natural elements, mold growth, water intrusion, things of that nature. Ultimately, the result of that is, the first photo I showed you, right? Which is the building that's collapsed a few years ago. You know, tenancy ability is kind of hard to evaluate, but what we've included in our report are repeat code violations, failure of a number of businesses to secure certificates of occupancy, and significantly, the market responds to the property, but the property has high levels of vacancy, which we believe reflects the condition of tenancy ability. So a couple of pictures, new ones this time. This is, this is a building, I believe this one's on the north side of the site. This is a building on the site. You can see the condition of the roof there. You can see the entrance here, right? Like, that is not a functional door. Even if it was, you see the sort of debris that's laid out in front of it. You see what's, the window situation here, the sort of wood over the window. This is reflective of untenantable conditions. This is the collapsed building I showed you earlier from a different angle. What you can see, right, is how the wall, or the wall continues to, sad, I guess generously, continues to sad there. This is clearly an untenantable building that could not be reoccupied. This is a building that, built with debris, again, exposed to the elements. Could not be readily occupied or tenanted. Same building from a different angle. And in this one, you'll see several pictures like this in criteria D. And what we're really showing here is, you know, these are industrial uses that are often reliant on loading zones, loading areas, right? So this is a loading area that could not be readily reused by a tenant. And we believe that's a condition of untenantability. So I'll go through these next two kind of quickly. See a hole in the wall there, debris in front once again. So the mold image from before, again, buildings that have fallen into such a state of disrepair so as to be untenantable. Second piece of criteria B that we'd like to reference deals with vacancy. This is a new part of the law from 2000, since we did this last time in 2019. And essentially, what this part of the law says is, "Buildings previously used for commercial, manufacturing, or industrial purposes, significant vacancies of such buildings for, building or buildings for at least two consecutive years." So just a little bit of market information that we use to substantiate this finding. It's challenging to calculate vacancy on this property. However, based on the few data points that we have, we estimate it around 32%. The industrial vacancy rate for the subarea is around 3.5%. So we see vacancy on this site of roughly 10 times what would be in the surrounding market for industrial uses. We compared that to the calculations that we included in our 2019 report, more than two years ago. And we found that the vacancy rate actually ticked up a little bit since then, but remains several times the average in the area. So we believe this find shows significant vacancies for at least two years. And under that, we find the property qualifies for criteria B, both on the untenantable argument, which I laid out first, and then the vacancy. Finally, criteria D, more highlighting here. Criteria D deals with buildings and improvements. So I'm going to be showing you pictures of buildings as well as other pieces of the site. And there's a lot of conditions that can be associated with criteria D, but we're going to speak to dilapidation, obsolescence, faulty arrangement, excessive land coverage, which I highlight just, I'll talk about that in a second. Obsolete layout, et cetera. And any of these factors that are detrimental to the safety, health, morals, or welfare of the community. So some of the arguments that we've included in our report to speak to criteria D, you know, dilapidated, unsafe buildings, as you've seen in these pictures that are in a state of collapse and disrepair. It's clearly a detrimental condition to health and safety of visitors to the site, folks that are traveling to the site. You're going to see a bunch of pictures of stairs and loading areas that are cracked, that don't have proper safety guardrails and things of that nature. That's a detrimental condition to health and safety. You're going to see dilapidated and cracked paved areas. This is something that, you know, besides just sort of drip and fall situations, also leads to pooling of water and erosion, given the site's proximity to the river. That's a condition we cited. And then finally, on this one, also just a lot of unregistered vehicles, trash and debris, right? And that's partially, we think, a function of the layout of the site. I'll show you an overhead in a second. But it's a condition that is detrimental to welfare of the community in the sense that it impedes the reuse of the site. And it's also just detrimental to health and safety and that leads to trash and debris and other stuff. Few more criteria D conditions that you'll see in the pictures. There's just, when we look at faulty arrangement arguments, we look at, are there things on the site that minimize the likelihood that vehicles are going to run into one another or vehicles and pedestrians are going to run into one another? So is there striping? Are there arrows that show me how to go? Is the parking lot either in front or in the back like maintained? All of that, we don't see those things on site. That's a health and safety condition, increases the likelihood of accidents and things of that nature, similar to the pedestrian structure. And then, so the last two kind of go together and kind of speak to just historic operations and managements on the site. It's very challenging when you walk around this property to figure out if somebody's in building X, like, where building X is and how to get there. There's, the numbering system is not consistent. Historic maps say one number, different numbers painted on a building. That's a detrimental condition in an emergency situation. It's a challenge for emergency vehicles and things of that nature. So, and I'm almost done, I promise. Couple of just faulty arrangement type things to point out for you here. You know, I mentioned that the property lacks striping and other circulation controls, right? So there's sort of these lanes that go in and around. For the most part, there's not a clear pattern for how you're supposed to circulate the site. And there are large vehicles that circulate the site and it can be challenging to navigate in that way. That condition frankly is also true up here. This parking lot here doesn't really have any striping. You're sort of pulling off Main and it's just an open area of dilapidated pavement. All that's, those are dilapidated improvements, but that's also faulty arrangement. Two other things I'll point out here. One, really the only way for a significantly sized truck to access the property, the rear of the property is here. And the turnaround here with the width is challenging at best and, well, challenging at best, I'll say. When we went out there a couple of years ago, we found a truck that was sort of bolt-on part maneuvering here. And, you know, to have an industrial property of this nature that doesn't have adequate turnaround like that is certainly a condition of faulty arrangement. So last set of pictures before I wrap. This is a, this is a loading zone that I referenced, right? There's, one, you see the sort of crumbled stair, crumbling stairs here on the right. But you also see a sort of lack of, I'm sorry, I'm pointing out the lack of, I'm looking at the crumbling pavements here. I'm looking at the crumbling stairs. I think we'll see a better picture right here is a similar site. This is, this is the edge of a loading area. You can see what's happening with the masonry there. This is a dilapidated improvement. This is sort of just like the scattered debris that I referenced. I believe this is largely a condition of the layout and the operations on the site. You'll also see dilapidated improvements in terms of buildings, in terms of building line here, the sag, the elements. This is that building one more time, dilapidated building. This is the roof once again, dilapidated, but you also see the presence of these unregistered vehicles. These are common throughout the site, like, this is a deleterious land use to have unregistered vehicles baroken up in a site like this that's detrimental to the welfare of the communities for argument. And then here's really the loading zone I wanted to point out. Saw this photo earlier, but, you know, there's no, there's no safety infrastructure around the outside of the loading zone in this. It's a dilapidated condition. Similar loading area, sort of crumbling, deteriorated, dilapidated, more dilapidated improvements. You know, graffiti on the site, like, every, a lot of sites have graffiti, right? We, this graffiti is way in the back, right? And like that layout situation that I've spoken about, sort of lack of security on the site, lack of access restrictions on the site, like, contributes to conditions like this, which we find detrimental. So to sum, criteria D, which is my last one, we find that the property qualifies under criteria D as it possesses buildings and improvements that exhibit obsolescence, dilapidation, faulty arrangement, deleterious land use, an obsolete layout, detrimental to safety, health, morals, and welfare, create unsafe conditions on site through the images that I've shown and the arguments included in our report. So summaring findings, oh, I know, I know. One more time, I know. We find the property qualifies as a condemnation area need redevelopment based on criteria A, B, and D. I'll close with just a little bit of next steps before we take questions, I'm sure from the board and the public. This is the recommended redevelopment area map, which we've placed on file, showing block 10,001, lot 3. And then to sort of close about, again, where we are in the process, tonight, we are at the public hearing. Ultimately, the planning board will likely make a recommendation of the governing body, one or the other. And then ultimately, the governing body will accept, reject, or modify those suggestions. So, thank you for listening. Sorry I went over and happy to answer any questions.
All right, well, I guess we start with our board. Any board members have questions?
Who is it that actually pays your fee?
I'm hired by the township.
The township pays your fee?
I'm hired by the township. My contract is with the township.
Does the fee come out of the development?
I don't know how the town hires, like, our place or bills.
It was characterized as the town, you said that it's costing the town publicly because they're here. As I understand it, their fee is paid by the escrow account of the developer.
I believe your understanding is wrong.
So the town, why would the town pay to investigate the developer's land to see if we could get a tax break? Why wouldn't he be paying that?
Well, first of all, we're not here to discuss tax breaks. That's not something the board deals with.
Listen, I could go stand on that side and talk.
I just want to let you know that there is an escrow account, but because we're hearing it right now, there haven't really been any bills except from redevelopment council, which is deemed on its own.
Well, eventually, I believe it's eventually reimbursed by the developer, eventually.
Okay, so it was mischaracterized when you said it's costing the town because it's going to be reimbursed by the, no, it's not, it's going to be reimbursed by the developer you just said. I made a point of that at the meeting the other night, so I just want to clear that up because it really is.
We didn't clear anything up. It's still a fact that we're paying again for it.
No, the developer's going to pay for it. You just said that, eventually, eventually, but it'll get it back in tax break.
At the end of the day, the developer's going to pay for it. That's going to come out.
I just want to clear that up because you're acting as if.
All right, we got that point.
All right, guys.
Any other questions?
I didn't have done anything. About the application, this has nothing to do with the application, but focus. We're not going back into this.
Any other members?
I think it's obvious that the land is dilapidated. I think it's obvious to anybody who lives in the town that's ever been there that it's in need of rehabilitation. Your criteria, I could bring you to a million places in town where that criteria could also be met. Those folks aren't getting a tax break. It is about a tax break. It's all about that and redevelopment of.
Yeah, our decision, our decision tonight is whether to accept it as an area of redevelopment.
What is the advantage of giving this developer area need redevelopment? What's the advantage? what's the advantage just to import to the town, I should say? What are the advantages?
You know, that's really not part of my presentation.
Tax break, that's a tax break, that's why he can't answer.
I think we're not here, because we're not here to talk about.
Well, we may not be here, but that's the truth, what's the advantage?
So, Andy, do you rather have this building here like that?
Well, listen, this developer bought this land at a discount because of its condition.
But that was another question, I just asked you a question, do you rather have something like that in our town?
It's a false question.
It's a yes or no, is it yes or no? Do you rather have something like that?
Our job, our job here is to determine whether it's an area in need of redevelopment, that's our job.
Let's do that.
You could either accept it or vote no, you don't accept it.
Well, listen, that developer bought that land at a discount because of its condition.
Andy, then use your vote. That's all you have to say, stop.
Right, and I can still make my point, you can't stop me from speaking.
It's not about this, you're not even talking about the application anymore. You're talking about something completely different that isn't even to do whether or not this property's dilapidated, that's all we're doing. Say yes or say no, not talking about a tax break. It has nothing to do with what we're doing, it has nothing to do with it.
It does everything to do with it, absolutely.
Well, argue it at the council if they do it up there. They can go up there and do, not right here. That's not the time for it.
Yeah, listen, I think it is.
Then vote no.
Let's move on, please, let's move on.
We have an area need of rehabilitation.
Vote as you want then.
That's what I plan on doing.
That's it.
You don't have to tell me, son.
Is any other members?
You're in D and M, we get that.
I'm doing this for the town, right? We're focused on one thing. If I want to complain, I'll complain about it at the council.
I never saw you so educated.
All right, let's calm down, let's get back to business. Come on, guys, let's be professional, all right?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment on that.
Let's make some comments and questions if we have some, go on.
I graduated 1980 in the school, in Bellevue. 1979, they had a work program. They sent me to this place to work, and I think it was, they made Tiffany lamps. This area should have been knocked down 40 years ago, and, you know, we're talking about it now, and I kind of agree, like, it's something that needs to be addressed now, otherwise 40 years from now, we may, well, not me, but somebody else may be still dealing with this. So, it's an area that needs to be dealt with, I agree.
I just want to say, I visited the site, I guess, in 2019, I've never been to this facility, and because it was an application before the board, I went there, and to tell you the truth, I was shocked at the condition of it. I felt, I feel the whole place is an accident waiting to happen, and I feel like one day, if nothing is done, you're going to look on the news and you'll say to yourself.
You're going to find bodies.
How did this happen? Like, who allowed this to happen?
There've been bodies found.
So, I mean, there's safety concerns, there's health concerns, you've got an apartment complex right next door, if this place catches on fire, I'm sure none of the buildings are sprinkled, the fire department can't access it correctly, so I feel if there's ever, ever an application before that fits the criteria for an area in need of redevelopment, I feel this is probably the number one location in town of Bellevue.
And Chairman, I tend to, I mean, you've got to understand, the placement of it, it is adjacent, a residential development that's partially in Bellevue, partially Nutley. There's also redevelopment happening in the adjacent 24 acres. We have the ability as a board, I have the ability, Councilman Graziano, on the council level, to see 24 and 14, 38 acres of underutilized property, contaminated property, cleaned, and even though we don't consider ratables on this board, new clean ratables going in that are not impacting the school district either. So, I tend to agree, I'm appalled and shocked that this didn't happen overnight. So where have we been for the last 10, 15 years while this was slowly happening? It's time to just put an end to it, and there's somebody willing to.
Well, like I said, Mr. Mayor, I was in these buildings 40 years ago, and that's what it was like.
Is somebody willing to invest in the property, is somebody willing to clean contaminated property up and put a clean ratable back on?
So, do we have a history on the contamination of property? You didn't really go over that. Did this ever leak out to any of the surrounding properties, cause them any harm? Is there still contamination at the property?
I didn't touch on the contamination, one, because I'm not an environmental engineer, and two, because the environmental records on this site are incredibly expensive.
I'm actually privy to some of that data, it has leaked onto the residential property, the residential properties, which are co-ops, the reason why they're not condos is because they can never get financed to become condos, they spent millions and millions of their own dollars to clean up their water contamination, but it leaked onto that property.
And if I may, no one touched upon it, but I think it should be said, from a security where the police, I know that the police go down here often, they have in the past and all over the years, because of vandalism, because of trespassing, because of other things happening, so that's just another piece of the two besides being in the condition of this.
Thank you. Go ahead.
You spoke of three severe buildings. I know there is another building that is being utilized, is that part of a whole piece of property that you're condemning?
Well, yeah, so everything within that parcel would be subject to this area need of redevelopment, that's what we should discuss.
Any other board members?
No.
No other board members, is there anybody in the public that has a question? Mr. Troz?
Yeah, hi, my real drop 95 bells.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't give it to me, I'm sorry.
N, A, R, I, O.
N, A, I.
You know, Super Mario Brothers.
One of my favorites. Mario, and what was the first name?
D, R, O, zebra, dog, zebra, 95 bells.
Thank you.
I mean, there's definitely that property, I used to go there up to 2002 when I was working for a trucking company, so I used to pick up and deliver in that area, and I can't believe what it looks like 20 years later, I don't know what happened, but 20 years ago, I said that property should be revitalized totally. But the only question I have is, I'm looking at Walter Kitty next door, that was contaminated, which we all know the story on that one, and they knocked the building down, it was falling apart, so the land's been vacant, so they have an area of rehabilitation, but my question is, if the developer just leveled that building out today and two years from now decided to build on it, so I'm just trying to figure out why one side gets rehab, one side gets redevelopment, but if he knocked it down, would he be eligible for rehabilitation? So that's the confusion part there, trying to understand why two adjacent properties, one is getting that and one is getting that, and they're both contaminated. That's the only question I have, just trying to figure that out.
Yeah, it's a fair question. Honestly, the best way I can answer it is the council passes a resolution asking a planner to study if this qualifies as an area needed redevelopment, I get hired to do the study for the town, and like, that's the standard I have to.
I'm just trying, if somebody can answer the difference for me, I don't know.
I mean, I'm not an expert, but I know there was some contamination on the Finkelstein property, and I mean, I didn't see the tests here, but there was chemical storage here, there was a leather factory, I believe there's, you know, a big cost of cleaning up this property.
Oh, definitely, yes, I was told by, I won't mention the attorney's name in town, but he told me his father used to work there when it was the leather factory, he says, God only knows what they dumped on that property, so I know from 20 years ago that the property is contaminated, but I'm just saying, but it has similarities, both properties are contaminated. I think they're finally doing the remediation right now, the last step in the Finkelstein, so I'm just trying to figure out why.
I believe that this has a lot more contamination, and you have the cost of demolition too.
That's just my.
Yeah, I don't know.
So again, if we're looking at cost now, what you just brought up was the point that I'm trying to make, forget the taxes aside, the developer bought the property at a wholesale price because of the condition of it. Once he knocks down those buildings and remediates it, which I've been told is going to be about 15 million, a million an acre, he's got land now worth 3 million an acre, and I don't see why the town has to give him anything more than they got right next door. That was my point from the beginning, the day we made this town area need of redevelopment or rehabilitation, I said that night, I'd never vote for another one of these, said it that night, it was a Zoom meeting, I said I'll never vote for it, they give five years, we're going to help them, yes, but these 25-year deals, why give it to one and not the other? That's my, that's my thing, I'm all for giving the developer a shot in the arm. Well, listen, it is, he brought up the cost, the chairman brought up the cost, it is about the cost, it's about what the developer.
I just felt that this site was in need of redevelopment compared to rehab because it's a lot more involved, that's all. That was a vacant, Finkelstein was a vacant piece of property, it was leveled, it had minor contamination. This has major contamination and a big cost for demolition. I mean, I think without this incentive, I think it stays as is, and I think everybody in the town loses.
I agree.
Everybody. And like I said, this, to me, it's a perfect example, when you watch the news and you see catastrophe and you say, how did this happen? How did they allow it? When you saw the condos in Florida collapse, you say, where was the building inspector? How did they, in America, how did this was allowed to happen? And I feel this is the perfect example of that. If something is not done, it's an accident waiting to happen. If it catches fire, the fire department can't access it, there's four ways in, I'm short of water, the water service isn't good in there, I think it'd be good for the whole town of Bellevue, that's my opinion.
Mr. Frank Tantoni.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to know if it's been resolved, is this, planning board members, are they serving legally, were they properly appointed? And if not, is this meeting legal? I mean, you go through all this work, I agree, it needs work there, but is this a properly appointed board?
To answer your question, it is a question that was brought up and researched, and I did personally speak to the township attorney about, you know, our, there's an ordinance that, you know, may not be very clear. He does not agree with me, he thinks it is very clear. I think it could be made a little bit clearer, there is a statute that we follow, which also, you know, kind of refers you back to your ordinance and your form of government. Because that ordinance in town was amended, and it was, you know, amended a couple of times, it was accepted, but it wasn't amended about this particular issue. So I did explain to him my, you know, theory about it, and so I think that my job is done as far as due diligence representing this board, I did bring it to his attention. We have a little bit of a different view about it, and it's really up to him, I would say, when I say him, I say the town attorney, giving counsel to mayor and council about either bringing up this ordinance or just stating that they think the ordinance is clear enough and that they're, you know, correct. It's out of our purview, once we bring it up, you know, we've discussed it, and now it's up to them to decide what they would like to do with it. My understanding is they feel that that ordinance is clear enough to continue. If anyone else out there, I don't know applicants or objectors, have further issues about it, the only way they can be addressed, in my legal opinion, is through litigation. I mean, it's reached a point of a difference of interpretation, a difference of legal interpretation, and so beyond that, we cannot force the town attorney to do something or make the mayor and council, or present something to the mayor and council, make them vote on it, we cannot, we don't have that power. We do have a duty to bring up issues when they're brought to our attention, which we have done, and everything else will be taken up with them, mayor and council.
Well, therein lies the arrogance of public officials. Now, the issue came up before.
I think she answered your question, I mean.
Well, no, Mr. Benaro, why you stopped me?
Because we have an application before the board.
This occurred.
The public portion is to answer a question about this application. You brought up a question, I allowed you to answer it, she answered you as best as she could, I don't want to dwell on this.
I don't know if you do, but the citizens have a right to know if this board is legally meeting.
And our attorney told you her legal opinion.
Well, in all due respects, to the honorable attorney and to the township attorney, well, a couple of years ago, in an illegal appointment, you forced me and a few other taxpayers to hire a lawyer, Mr. Cates, one of, if not the most knowledgeable redevelopment attorney in the state of New Jersey, and we have engaged you as written opinion, you guys were wrong and you had to remove that person, so now, once again, I'm being told the same thing, go hire a lawyer, right? Your duty, especially you, Mr. Chairman, your duty is to make sure.
I meant with the town attorney, the mayor, and our planning board attorney, and this is, it's a gray area.
I have a letterhead of the town attorney, the state Supreme Court recognizes him as a matrimonial attorney, not a land use attorney or even a municipal attorney, so take that for what it's worth, you know? But you and this board have an obligation to know if these were legally appointed, and we brought up the argument as late persons, you were wrong the last time, you forced us to go, and that's the arrogance of public officials, good suing, they love for citizens to sue you because then they get a chance to hire a lawyer at taxpayer's expense, and then those lawyers give them campaign contributions at election time, so we have to know now. So I want to, I disagree with the attorney, and evidently, she's not firm in her decision, she's leaving it up to the town attorney by her.
She stated her legal opinion, there's not much else she could do.
That's mainly, our board does not have the power to force mayor and council, if we wanted to, to do or interpret or change an ordinance or introduce, we don't have that power, legally speaking, we don't have that power.
Mr. Beto, I've been coming to planning board reading for 48 years, and I've seen planning board attorneys make absolute legal decisions, legally advertising the board what's right and what's wrong, so don't tell me you don't have that power.
And that's been done, I've done that, I've advised, I've done my due diligence, I've done my duty, 100%.
And what are you saying? All these members were legally appointed according to the statute?
I just told you, what my opinion was, was that that ordinance was not particularly clear enough for my satisfaction, and if I were the town attorney, which I told him, I would revisit that. He told me.
It's your obligation as the planning board attorney to advise them, forget the town attorney.
No, he has, I cannot do that, he has to do that.
You most certainly can, really, I think planning board attorneys make decisions, advise the plan.
I have.
Forget the town attorney, he deals with the council, he advises the council.
Mr. Frank Tantoni, she gave you her opinion, she gave you her opinion.
No, she didn't give it, she pushed it off to the town attorney, she just said it's not my purview.
It's his job to do it, not, I can't force him to do it, that you have to.
It's your job.
I did my job.
Clear question, are all these members legally appointed or not?
I explained it.
As a, as a.
Underwise, they're all legally appointed until proven otherwise.
Are we an autonomous board from the council, how will we, I mean, I know we're under the.
Chairman, can we question the witness, please? Allow the public to question the witness.
Mr. Frank Tantoni, I think we've answered as clear as we can answer. If you have a question to this witness, please ask it.
You're not going to get an answer. You got an answer from Mr. Beto, she doesn't agree with the town attorney, but they override us, go get a lawyer.
She'll tell me if they're all certain legally.
Her opinion, I think I could say her opinion was no, she doesn't think we're serving.
Okay, well, let's get on the, that's on the record then, okay. So that's all, this meeting may not be legal, thank you.
Any other question?
Frank Fleishman, F-L-E-I-S-H-N-A-N, like the Marjorie, 833 Main Street. Before I ask you questions, Mr. Collett, Mr. Beto, just to be clear, Mr. Benaro just referred to this situation as a gray area, would you agree with that estimation?
I would say that in my review of the ordinance, I feel like it could be clearer, it could be cleared up.
Okay.
That's my interpretation, I spoke to the township attorney, which is his job to decide, if he feels that it could be cleared up or clearer or amended, and he feels his interpretation is that it's clear enough and that it's fine the way it is. So we have a little bit of a difference of interpretation of.
Clarity.
Clarity, let's say. Now, I have advised appropriately, I've done my due diligence, I cannot jump over to the mayor and council and town attorney and force them to do something that I think should be done or shouldn't be done, it's not, I cannot do that legally, I cannot do that. That comes through litigation. It gets argued, one side, the other side, a judge makes a decision, comes out and says, they're all legally appointed according to this order, they're not legally appointed according to this, you have to redo it, you don't have to redo it, this ordinance, that's all comes from a judge's decision at the end of the day. that's all comes from a judge's decision, at the end of the day, an outside entity. Because we are an autonomous board, but so are they. So I, I, we, anybody here, let's say everybody agreed to do that. We cannot force that hand.
So short of litigation, basically the government board to basically make that-
Decide.
Ordinance clearer, amend, whatever.
Right, with, you know, now that we've discussed it, we've researched it, we've brought it, you know, our due diligence is once something is brought to our attention, we advise, and we discuss, and we try to correct. And that's all we can do.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that, thank you, okay, sorry, Mr. Colley, okay. As you probably tell by my address, I live right next door at Arbor Hills, so, we've lived there about two years now. So, my question is, you said there's about 30% vacancy rate on that property, is that correct? Okay, so 60% is pretty much occupied. In your estimation?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, and you were the one who actually was on site, looking?
I think it's 70%, if there's 30% unoccupied, it would be 70%.
I'm not good at math, I'm sorry. So, I'm just wondering, I'm sorry, you were on site doing stuff?
I've been on site, yes.
So, of the buildings that you believe are dilapidator, hidden criteria, or that sort of thing, of the ones that are occupied and are active workplaces, do a lot of them fall under your view of them being dilapidated, substandard, that sort of thing?
I can't really give you a percentage, but yes, I mean, it's my finding, the generality of the buildings, the bulk of the buildings are substandard, and as you just established, more than half of them are occupied, so yes, it would be my finding that some of the buildings are substandard also.
Okay. I think, and I think this is, this is Norado touched on this, toward the front of the property, there is a building that houses a liquor store, has restaurant space, that sort of thing, looks relatively new, honestly. Is that also part of the, part of the area that you believe is designated to the area in need of redevelopment?
That's interesting you bring that building up, yes, it is on the same lot, so it would, should the council elect designate, be part of the area in need of redevelopment. If you heard me near the beginning of the presentation, I did say that I didn't find that all of the buildings had been substandard, have been in that building. I didn't know any substandard conditions internally in the liquor store that I-
Okay, I appreciate it. Now, is in your purview, I understand it's in your purview to make the recommendation that this area, that this property being area in need of redevelopment, is it within your purview to recommend it's a condemnation area in need of redevelopment? Or is that a governing body decision?
That's a governing body decision.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other members in the public? Mr. Sheldon?
Good evening, everyone, Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. Before I ask any questions of the expert here, I want to briefly comment upon the thread espoused by Mario and Mr. Frank Antoni, and also touched upon by Mr. Fleishman, and that's the legality of this board. It's been said this evening that there's a gray area of one of the ordinances, it's just not one ordinance, it's actually several ordinances that, as Mr. Conti pointed out at the last meeting, clearly show that this board as currently constituted is an illegal one. And yes, the argument has also been said, if you disagree, hire a lawyer. Take action. Newsflash to you, I have hired a lawyer, I have Mr. Cates on retainer. Mr. Cates is within, Monday at the latest, is going to rule on this situation. And it may not just be, as he's already discussed with me, a misunderstanding, or a gray area, nuance of the law. It might actually go much farther than that. As Mr. Conti said last month, that in his opinion, and shared by many of us, and possibly Mr. Cates too, that what has happened here since July of 2019, when Mr. Melon and Mr. Martino engineered the usurpation of planning board appointment authority from the rest of the council, what has happened here might actually rise. I don't want to put any words in Mr. Cates' mouth, we're waiting with bated breath for him to weigh in on this matter, but as has already been said, Mr. Cates is the oracle, Mr. Cates is the recognized expert, essentially in the United States for municipal and use law. But it may very well be the case, when his report is provided, and I'll make sure that everyone gets a copy of it, that what has happened here these last two and a half years rises to the level of criminal conspiracy and criminal fraud. And at that point, that report goes to the DCJ and the US Attorney for New Jersey. And let the fun begin, Mr. Melon.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I request, I don't know if this is exactly through our attorney, can we focus on the applicant?
I'm going to now.
And later on, discuss exactly the status of this board? It's a shame, and it's an embarrassment to have people come before us and politicize this board. We are not-
It's not political.
We're not, we're not in politics, we're not in politics, we're looking to serve this town.
These are legitimate questions, first raised by Mr. Conti.
People that come before us, professionals that come before us, and we all live it. We're out of, we're out of focus here, we're out of focus. If you want to discuss the legitimacy of this board, please do so after the hearing is done of these professionals coming before us and trying to present.
Mr. Norado, that would be done, but usually as soon as the last application is heard, you immediately adjourn. When do we ever have a chance at the end of a meeting?
Well, we do have a chance, we had, what's that we brought it up? I'm only saying-
It was finished.
I'm only saying-
Mr. Sheldon, were you finished with your question?
I'm finished with that part, now I'd like to actually address this right. Mr. Benaro, you said that one of the reasons why the Kitty property got the five-year rehabilitation designation, and this property is being considered for redevelopment, condemnation area in need of redevelopment, is that, in your opinion, the Kitty site was minimally contaminated. For those of us who have been following this situation for decades, you look back at those reports for the Kitty property, and in fact, in 2011, the previous administration had several experts, environmental experts, engineers, people, engineers who had worked at the Kitty site, come in and they talked about the obscene amounts of heavy metals, mercury, chromium, that it were-
I think a lot of that site was cleaned up, though.
It's been remediated a lot.
It's been remediated before these present people took-
It's still listed on the D.P.'s superfuck site.
Yeah, but I think much of it was already taken care of.
What they, what they were doing, in addition to the heavy metals, the non-volatile materials, the carcinogens, there were also organic compounds, such as T.C., trichloroethylene, which is a very potent carcinogen. They had, over the years, dug wells, and were slowly venting it under whatever protocol exists to release some of those chemicals in a controlled fashion, so that the land-
Yeah, but like I said, I think over the years, much of the contamination was already cleaned up. Mr. Di Renzo, was some of that contamination cleaned up until, before, I guess, last year or two years ago?
I think most of it, not all of it, though, I think there's still an honorary, right, huh? There was some groundwork problems.
But Mr. Harris, much of the contamination was already remediated, thank you.
Well, I've been told in recent times, while that site is under development, there have been large mounds of soil moved about on the property, and at first I-
Some of the soil is unstable, so they have to move it, it won't hold up the warehouse.
Can we step to this application?
Well, I was just talking, they were, they were doing additional remediation, because they, they had to do that before they could even put up the warehouse. But anyway, I disagree with your statement that the Kitty is, was a minor contamination site, and this is major. I think all of them were essentially at the same, same level, and perhaps the Kitty site-
Well, Mr. Harris has stated, most of the contamination was already cleaned up at the Kitty site, so.
As you all know, in the last year or so, the, and this was touched upon by a few of the speakers, the entire township was declared an area in need of rehabilitation. And as part of that declaration, it implemented a five-year tax plan for new construction, so that in the first year, zero, zero taxes are paid, in the second year, 20%, and it ramps up in 20% increments over the five-year period. So there is a tax program, a tax break program in place for new construction if this site were declared an area of rehabilitation. But yet, as a couple of speakers asked, Mr. Conti in particular, why are you going to this extreme of declaring it an area-
Do you think this, this property should stay the way it is? Are you in favor of leaving it?
That's a different, what I'm worried about is the, the financial aspect, I'm all in favor of deciding-
Well, we can't consider financial aspects, but it's just my opinion, and I don't know if this is right, but-
Because in order, in order for a pilot to be issued, the area, this has to be declared an area of redevelopment, the council cannot go ahead to the next step. This is a predicate process where you have to, to make the ruling that it's-
Our decision is to determine whether it's an area in need of redevelopment, not to grant a pilot, not to-
If you don't do that, then the council can't, can't ordain that, so then-
The council could do whatever they want, we could recommend no, and they could do whatever they want.
Maybe it's a technicality, they can overrule you, but, but the protocol is, is that first the area, you guys say it's an area of redevelopment, then the council sanctions it, and then, once that's codified, then you can go about giving the 25 or 30-year tax abatement.
We're not here to discuss tax abatement.
You aren't, but again, what you do here does have an integral relationship to further actions as far as tax abamts are concerned. Yes, yeah, I know, you're just-
And they can do whatever they want, they can take our recommendation or not accept it.
I can give you one quick example, Mr. Sheldon. We didn't want the Wawa to stay open 24 hours, we all said no. You see the Starbucks going up, right? So that just tells you how much power of something like that, if the council wants to get it done, they're going to get it done.
This project's going to get built with or without the tax abatement, because there's a lot of money in it for the development.
I'm sure there is, I mean, analysts down, how many bucks can be made?
The question whether you want this to remain as it is or be developed is the first question, it's going to get developed.
This is, you also, you want to declare this a condemnation area, and correct me if I'm wrong, but condemnation is necessary before the council can use power of eminent domain. Without it being listed as a condemnation area, eminent domain is off the table, is that correct?
Yes.
That is correct, right? So that, there are, I don't want to, I have to be careful now, because every time I speak, I wind up being served with more gossip, so I have to be careful here, what words I choose. But there is a, potentially insidious, well, I'm just laughing it off, because it's a bogus thing that could end up-
Yeah, let's stick to this application.
But, but the, there is this insidious little aspect here, that you are setting up the basis for not only a 30-year pilot to be given, but also-
There are no handle pilots, Mr. Sheldon.
But also to, to allow the council to use eminent domain to take, to take this property from the existing owner.
We're not, whether to accept his recommendation, or to not.
Can I ask a question, just two things I'd like to know. Has the property been sold, and what is the, why is there condemnation of this? Because we have voted on some of these without condemnation. Why is there condemnation, and has the property turned hands, has developer purchased?
Thank you, that's my last question, why, why is it necessary for a condemnation declaration? You're going to give it redevelopment, fine, but why do you, why do you need condemnation? Because the only reason for that, as I understand the law, is because the council has the, the plan to use eminent domain. They're going to take, take this property from the existing owner. You are just, Mr. Melon, you have, you have been openly talking about using eminent domain for the great lawn property, so you're saying, oh, we never do it. You just said the other week that we're going to ever consider eminent domain for, for the great lawns.
And we are for the great law, not for a contaminated piece of property, or we end up in a line of succession.
You said, just a second ago, you used a smirk, oh, we would never use eminent domain, but you were talking about, well-
On this page, pretty, Mr. Sheldon.
Well, you didn't qualify it then, you just said we never use eminent domain.
I don't qualify you, I'm talking to the chairman.
Well, you didn't, weren't looking in any particular direction.
Can we please ask the witness that question?
As Mr. Conti just said, why, why do you need a condemnation declaration here? The only reason for it is to exercise the power of eminent domain.
I don't believe eminent domain is going to be used, this.
And that's not the only reason.
Uh, to the question-
Then what's the reason for condemnation? What's the, what's the advantage for having a condemnation area?
Well, it, one, it is, my understanding, the property has been sold and tax record listing has changed. And then, why are you considering condemnation this evening? You're considering condemnation this evening because the resolution that was passed, that got sent to you, asked you to consider it based on a condemnation, and that's for sure.
That's circular logic, you're saying the reason we're doing this, because we're doing it. What's the basic value, why are you saying?
The reason you're doing it is because the council, when they directed the planning board to do the study, said in that resolution condemnation.
So then why does the council want use condemnation?
That's a question for them.
Come to a council meeting, Mr. Sheldon.
Well, we got two of the council members here.
This is not a council meeting, this is a planning board meeting. Let's leave to what-
Mr. Sheldon, he said that the property was sold, so condemnation is not going to be used.
Which is my point, the property is sold. A very smart developer got a condemned property for a very cheap price, and he's going to do what that was.
That's not our, that's not our-
I just want that to be in the public record, we're giving tax breaks to the wrong people.
Thank you.
As we struggle to pay our bills, and as we got billionaires getting tax breaks.
Say again, please?
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but you just said eminent domain isn't going to be used here, for this, this particular property.
Well, we, what you can do is take that part of your question, I would, I would suggest that you take those portions of your questions to the mayor and council meeting.
Of course, of course, what we're scheduled for them to be-
They're going to know what they want to do with it, what they don't want to do with it. I would assume that they can, we don't know.
So, Mr. Benaro, you're operating on the good faith understanding that eminent domain-
That's my understanding, yes.
That eminent domain will not be used here. So whatever, however you vote on this, you're doing so on the good faith understanding that eminent domain-
He's voting on three criteria, whether or not they meet the criteria for area redevelopment.
Yes, I want to clear something up, because of all this argument taking place. And that is, everyone knows, I'm the chairman of the zoning board, and I go down to Atlantic City, and I go to U.K. Mistral's, and I go to classes. And I brought this question up, and the question is this. And, and they change it from one year to the next. The situation is, the council sends a request for this board to do an investigation. They hire somebody, they do the investigation, and then after they get the investigation done, they send a recommendation to the council. Now, you could send a recommendation it's an area in need of redevelopment, you could say, send a recommendation it's an area in need of rehabilitation, you could send a recommendation that it's neither, and it makes no difference. The council does not have to listen to your recommendation, they can ignore it.
So you went the same course I did.
And the whole thing is, the final thing's with the council, so let, let him talk what he wants to say. If you ask him any questions based on his testimony, okay, but there's no reason to keep on arguing all this. Because whether it's an area in need of redevelopment, an area in need of rehabilitation, that final decision is made by the council. And then the council also makes a decision on whether they want to give a pilot or not. So all this is a waste of argument.
Thank you.
Take him as a question.
It's not a complete waste, because we're putting on the record some of the facts that the Kitty, listen, people are, people are not well-heard at the council. I watch the meetings, they ask questions, they get no answers, and they're told to sit down. So this is a forum where they can at least, the taxpayers have a voice. Because they don't have a voice, they could make a statement at a council meeting, but I get your question, I get answered.
Anybody else in the public have a question?
You won't answer questions tonight that are being asked.
Hi, Chris Kosep, 85 Route 10 Road. So, very long story short, basically, the board is up there to say, yes, tear this building down, or no, keep it up.
No. We're doing three criteria that were outlined by the expert.
Right.
We have to agree with those three criteria or not. If we agree with them, then we vote, it's an area in need of redevelopment.
Okay.
That's it.
To the property, not to the buildings, the plant.
Okay, the bottom line is, basically, I don't have to yell and scream at this young man, I get to yell and scream at you like I normally do.
About two weeks, right, about two weeks.
Fabulous. And then, so this isn't about who's bought, who bought the property, this isn't about anything, so it's either-
Whether we agree with the three criteria that the professional-
Yeah, and it's procedural in nature, to be perfectly honest.
It seems like such a nice building, of course, keep it up, sure, we'll go with that. All right, like I said, so I get to yell at you again, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Anybody else in the public before we close the public portion?
I like you.
My name is Chris Cosup, 85 Route 10 Road.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Chris Cosup, K.O.S.S.U.P., 85 Route 10 Road, Level 2, Jersey.
Thank you.
When, when, when everyone says redevelopment, I know that area is, is bad, it looks bad. But what are you going to redevelop that? I mean, no one's saying, is it going to be, maybe a working building? I kind of, I'm asking the question, it's serious. Or are we going to put apartment homes, if you put apartment homes there, I don't know if anybody's going to go into Harrison or Carney.
I don't, I can tell you right now, I don't think there's going to be any apartments, they would never clean that up, the residential state.
I mean, it's right next door, he lives right next door, so I'm not sure, so I mean, it's going to be apartment buildings, I mean, I think that's a reason, because there's so much overdevelopment going on right now. And I've been to Harrison, yes, I've been to Harrison and Carney in the last few weeks. You can't move, everything's a one-way, it's a one-way street, nothing moves. And most of the, except for One Street, Washington, is one road, one road. And that's going to change eventually when you put a bike lane in. So we're not going to, we have a big traffic problem that's going on. Plus, what's going to happen with the schools? And like I said, whenever a building goes up, every unit gets a half a car space, I mean, which is a silly thing. A half a car space is- A half a car space is not nothing. I know each old millennials are gonna move in, and they don't take buses. Well, most of the millennials I know live in the basement of a home, so I mean.
This site's not being considered for residential.
All right, well, just, just want that on.
And just to add to that, we don't even know, we're not even, like, he might be privy to some information, but we don't really know, we're just here to.
But but if it comes down to it's gonna be homes.
If that application comes before us, let's say we get an application in the future that comes before us, then we can comment on it, but right now.
One last thing, like you just said, the board is on a gray area. I always say, wait until it's a hundred percent sure, I mean, contact someone in the states, I mean, contact the governor. He has a lot of people working in his office, he can talk to people and say, what's right, what's not right, I mean, I don't know. I only watch things on TV from home, and, I mean, on the computer, the the things, I mean, I'm not too swift on a lot of this stuff, I mean, so, I'm trying to learn, I'm trying to find out, and when I come here, when you hear a gray area, I mean, that could be this way or that way, so.
Well, not by gray area, it was two different interpretations, our attorney and their attorney. To me, it wasn't cut and dry either way, so I, I feel it's prudent to continue with the job of our planning board.
Thank you, chairman.
But but then later on, down, if it comes out that you're wrong, then what happens?
And we deal with that.
I don't, I don't deal with maybes, I try to deal with facts as best I can.
There's always a maybe in the background, I'm just.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public? If not, we'll close, close the public portion for this application. Did you wanna make the summation?
Sure, um, sure, I was here tonight to present the findings, um, as to whether or not this property qualifies as an area needed redevelopment. It's my professional opinion that it does. Uh, I think we presented a lot of testimony, and, um, I'll leave it to the board to vote as they see fit.
Thank you.
Thank you. So with that being said, does any member wanna make a motion to accept the recommendations to declare seven oh five, seven fifty-seven Main Street an area, condemnation area in need of redevelopment?
Motion.
I'll say.
Please go over.
Who make the motion?
I made the motion.
And listen, I'll write a second.
Sure.
We vote?
A letter goes out.
I can prepare a letter.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
What are our votes? Uh, Chairman Venero.
Yes.
Dean does it, yeah, Dean can do it. Um, Mr. Conti.
No.
Mr. Banden.
Yes.
Mr. Boe.
Yes.
Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Ms. Guam.
Yes.
Ms. Novarado.
Yes.
Mayor Malham.
Yes.
Mr. Zangary.
Yes.
Mr. Gany.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you need a, do you need a short break? We're gonna take a, a short five-minute break for us. Go back to order. Next up, we have PB twenty-two oh two, an ordinance amending chapter eighteen. Eighteen land subdivision, oh, chapter eighteen, gotcha. Chapter eighteen land subdivision, chapter nineteen land use procedures, chapter twenty site plan, and chapter twenty-three zoning in a township above. The planning board is to review this ordinance and submit recommendations to the mayor and council. Are you ready?
Okay, good. I'm gonna stand here so I can look down at my notes. So, as, as many of you know, a few years ago, um, there was a reexamination of the master plan, which came up with a lot of new recommendations, and then amendments to the zoning ordinance that implemented many of those, um, new recommendations. And what, what's looking to be accomplished here with these amendments is implementing some of what we've learned over the last two years of seeing applications come in pursuant to those regulations. What, um, basically, what worked, what didn't work, what should be adjusted, um, whether there was a preference for something else. So what this, what this twenty-five-page list of changes is, essentially is, um, it's a combination of many things. One of them is the mandatory electric vehicle charging station standards that have been passed down by the state. Uh, another one is adding in the zoning ordinance amendments that were recommended in the last master plan reexamination. Um, a third was putting in the streetscape requirements, um, for any projects developed in the BG and BA zone, uh, to have the developer pay for the decorative streetscape along, along the street frontage for those projects, and many of them will be larger new construction projects, so they should do that kind of improvement, not the township. And the fourth item is essentially the minor adjustments I was talking about to the sweeping changes that previously were discussed. And, um, what has been going on almost for the last, over, over a year now, is keeping a running total of all of the issues that came up with applications that people either, that they wanted to see adjusted, whether it was the parking standard, uh, whether it was the driveway width, whether it's, um, the number of bedrooms, um, you know, for, for the third unit, uh, little things. Some of them are major, some of the most little are minor. One of the things, like, the major thing that this does is implement sustainability, sustainable building standards, require native indigenous plantings, things that, um, Green Team and other officials of 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 Bel- have been working on, that everybody wants to see incorporated into the zoning ordinance. So that's essentially an overview of what all of these are. They're hard to follow, um, unless you look at them hand in hand with the actual zoning book and stuff.
Just, just require Mary.
Sure.
Mary, while you're still in the overview, uh, section. Would you say that these changes are, uh?
Tightening.
Tightening or loosening our current zone? Are they curtailing our zoning ordinances tighter, or are they opening them up?
Oh, making it tighter.
Thank you.
Not in all cases. That, 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 not in all cases, you're allowing things that weren't allowed. Actually, you're allowing things that used to be allowed.
Why don't we let it finish?
Well, these, the mayor, interrupt, first of all, you shouldn't even be sitting on the board because there's things in here that pertain to you, you have a conflict. You should recu, you absolutely do. You have a conflict if you had any.
Now, I guess you're a private investigator then, okay?
I'm not a private investigator. You have a conflict on, on some of these issues, that's all that.
Not one.
But you don't have decency to recuse yourself.
Not one.
But Mr. Venero does when he has a conflict, or I do if I have a conflict.
If I had a conflict, I would recuse myself.
You do have one, but that's okay, I didn't expect you to, I didn't expect that you would honor the.
Your opinion doesn't matter to me. Your opinion doesn't matter to me.
Well, of course it doesn't, I'll get a lawyer and sue you.
All right, let's, let's stick to the.
But you want.
Okay, I can, um, uh, so, one of the, one of the things that I will do, and I think might be useful, is I'll just run through, if you, if you guys want that, I, I, I may not need to do that, um, everyone has had the, the document, um.
There's a lot of information in it.
Yes, it has a lot in there.
Okay, so if you could, if you could explain, how to explain the implications to us.
And what we will go through. Okay, um, so I've talked about, um, the sustainable building standards, the, um, indigenous plantings, general interpretation, um, is the other thing that's been a big component of a lot of these regulations. Um, one of the things that I, I wish, um, Frank was here for this.
It's a project.
Well, one, one of the things that has come up for, for a lot of, a lot of this, and, and I think Corinne, you can speak to this too, is, is people found some of the fence standards confusing, what fence was permitted in each zone, and that's been clarified. People found some of the definitions for the dwelling units confusing, um, and the types of dwelling units and the categories, that's, you know, we've attempted to clarify that some more. Driveway standards, clarifying that. Parking standards, which, um, to speak to Mr. Conti's point, uh, I can absolutely say are being tightened. Um, the parking requirements for ground floor retail and mixed-use buildings, um, are being increased, the parking, um, requirements for any project that does not meet the twenty-five percent, one bedroom, maximum, excuse me, two bedrooms for twenty-five percent. If they go over that, they have to provide a lot more parking. The parking for requirements for visitor, um, visitors for any project is increased. Right now, it's at forty, you, you don't have to provide parking for visitors until you have forty units, we're dropping that down to twenty units.
Just about the parking, is, is there, is that included tandem parking?
Yes, the tandem parking, um, is no longer able to count in multifamily projects, um, and the definition for tandem parking for one and two-family homes has been clarified, so those are the kind of things that, that this is looking, seeking to accomplish. And as, as we go through, that's really, that's the biggest, to me, that's the biggest component. Um, there's some sign changes as well, um, and that was also for clarification, defining certain types of signs.
I know we had some problems with applications with the signs, right?
Yes, um, and, 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 and you know, there's, 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 um, there was a lot of concern about the signage, uh, at the last time this, this ordinance was amended. And so there was a sunset clause put in for one of the types of signs, for, um, box signs, because a lot, apparently, a lot of businesses do have them, and they're no longer permitted. So there was a sunset put in there to allow people a year to recognize that this isn't gonna be permitted forever. So if you know that this is what you wanna keep, then you come in now for your permit, and if not, then you have to follow the new standards.
Mary, can I stop before, just to, just to ask about the signage? So when a new storefront comes in and replaces an old storefront, they have to replace the sign, it doesn't have to do with a building or anything, so say one, one, you know, uh, commercial tenant moves out, they have one of the old box signs, whatever it is, a new one moves in. The rule now says the new one has to adhere to.
The new sign standards.
The new sign standards, okay.
No box sign would be permitted.
Okay, so nothing's grandfathered in anymore unless it's an existing, uh, storefront, meaning the storefront, the, the existing store itself.
Yes, and one of the things that, that this ordinance, um, also does propose is, um, allows for channel letter signs, um, partially because there's not a whole lot of other choices. If you don't use channel letter signs, um, and you don't permit box signs, you're going to, you, you have channel letter signs, and you have a flat sign of some other material that's either lit with goosenecks, um, or no other way. So this does now permit channel letter signs, um, of a diffused illumination, um, because there's new, there's new technology out there that diffuses the lighting of the channel letters itself, so that's how it's worded. Otherwise, there really would be very limited choices, and you can't really have a retail vibrant area and, 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 um, you know, like Washington Street, without allowing illuminated signs, um, so that is being put back in here. So that's, those are the kind of, um, little things that you can choose to keep or change. Um, I, I personally think that any zoning, um, has to be tried out in a community to see if it works. And I, I think that what, what's being proposed here is a lot of little tweaks that came up, that was discovered in, um, in the zoning office and during planning board applications by the subcommittee, that they wanted to see changed. And so there's a couple of use changes in here, and I think that might be, um, some of the things that were being talked about, um, one of the uses was changing the zone that catering, um, catering facilities were, would be permitted in. Uh, another, another one of the change was talking about tattoo parlors, another change was talking about office uses, um, in the BG zone, and.
What's, what's the changes with the offices?
The office, the office is currently already permitted to be on the, on, on Washington Avenue, um, Washington Street, I'm sorry.
Avenue, avenue.
Yeah, okay.
We're not going to open, what do you have to add?
And, um, and what, what was, what was done with the BG zone with the mixed-use buildings, the buildings that, um, will allow for the, um, the four stories of residential above the retail, that was originally drafted to really force retail and force restaurant, and it did not allow all the other uses that were permitted in that zone normally. But what this does is now allow professional offices to be on those ground floor spaces of those buildings. I think that, the, it, it has been shown that there's no downside to allowing that. It's an avenue, and it should be, it should allow all the same uses that are, that are permitted in all the other buildings.
Is that something other towns, uh?
Yes, and, and it's, it's especially become more and more important, given the changes in, in retail.
Why did we take it out?
I think the issue, well, I, I can, I can answer that because I kinda, it, it's part of the conversation we had in the original subcommittee. Uh, it was related to stop, like, call centers and back office operations from being on the main strip, which actually took away from the life of the strip. I mean, it, I, it was never meant to incorporate tax offices or real estate offices or other customer-facing offices where customers will come in off the street and have a conversation and, and do a service or something along the lines. So it was really to, like I said.
And wait, I'm saying, those uses were always permitted, right? Washington Avenue is loaded with them.
They are, they are, no, and.
Washington Avenue is loaded with them.
The point wasn't to get rid of them, the point wasn't to hurt them, the point was to make sure that the avenue stayed lively. So it comes down to your interpretation of the definition of retail and service, and if we have any confusion, we clarify the, the confusion. I work, I work closely with the zoning officer on that, and if, if there is any, we work to make sure that it's fully understood and there's, there's, there's no problems. That's why we were making changes.
So the new buildings on Washington Avenue would be permitted to have offices instead of, uh, retail?
Specific types of offices, it's still, again, back office, I don't think should be the, on, on, on the main level. I don't think call centers should be on the main, they're not customer-facing, there's just.
Is that spelled out in the ordinance, or?
If it's not, we could, we could spell it out.
In the definition of retail.
Yeah. The definition of retail was changed to actually, um, include the offices that are publicly, public serving, and so that is part of these amendments.
Yeah, the other.
Mary Ann, the, the ones that I know of on Washington Avenue, the real estate office that's currently there, the insurance office that's currently there, the doctor's office that's currently there, the accountant office that's currently there, the leasing office that's currently there, I'm looking at the photos of them, they would be services because people are coming in from the street to patronize them.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And what zones would that be permitted in?
Any zone that permits retail.
I have a good question too, about, um, just right at the beginning of your report, the low-impact green site, uh, designs.
Mm-hmm.
I've been all for trying to tighten up our groundwater retention, uh, and I guess this kinda touches on it, that we could keep more of the, I know, is Mr. Frant Antoni still here, or he's not? It's always one of his concerns, right, Mr. Frant Antoni, that we, uh, try to retain more of the water. So by this, uh, green impact, would that be addressing that also, by trying to keep more with green roofs and?
Yes, it would. It, it would give some teeth to, um, incorporating some green components into the ordinance, this came from the Green Team.
Is that, I know the, Mr. Mayor, somebody came before the council, I was watching that, uh, from the Green, about stormwater, and her, those recommendations would be included in this?
Uh, that's a little different, that, that recommendation, she's here, but that recommendation was to bring in a, um, stormwater engineer, uh, which we actually, the council, next meeting, which was Tuesday, voted to go out to RFP for that.
For, for, for townwide.
Townwide.
Right. I think it's, it's a major, uh, concern that we control as much stormwater coming off these new developments as possible. I don't think we should have it as good as it was, I think whoever comes and builds it should be, make it better, retain more water.
Chairman, I think if it's considered a major project, and I, I don't know the exact definition of major project, but you actually have to keep more water on-site longer as a major project.
I know some of our applications, it just doesn't seem like.
Yeah, I don't know the definition of large.
The one was gonna have brick pavers, and the water was gonna go through the brick pavement.
No.
For my life, I mean, I can't see, you get a thunderstorm, a severe rain, out of water's gonna permeate through brick pavers, I, 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 I don't see that.
This, um, this basically says for projects ten thousand per feet or more, they would need to incorporate at least two of the list of green features, that actually, some of them will be drainage-related, some of them will be, um, just general green walls and, um, indigenous species, but it, it gets a step further in a way that is found to be a legal step, um, in, in, enforcing the developers who are taking away, um, the, the forest areas, to put it back in, and, and do it in a way that's considered green and, and sustainable.
Legally, our town can uphold the stuffer standards than the state standards?
There's, no, um, that's a.
It's pretty good, uh, for the stormwater. State did? But the town with opposite. And it's tougher to say more than an acre of disturbance to have the. And it's tougher if there's more than an acre of disturbance, they have to, it becomes a major project? Or if there's more than a quarter acre of impervious coverage?
This tries, this tries to fit in those cracks. This goes from 10,000 feet to an acre. So it does something that the state didn't do that you have the ability to do.
I'm in favor of, like I said, retaining as much water on-site and not making a problem for somebody down the hill or down the street. So I think that's positive.
And to branch off of that, Mary Ann, we can, that infrastructure fund concept that we spoke about too, is that something that we could recommend the council to look into along with this? Or does that have to be separate? Because that was one of the things we did discuss this summer.
It should be separate, because these are, these would actually be amendments to the ordinance itself that would be a request to actually do study necessary to implement that type of amendment.
Does that have to come from them or from us, or...
It can come from you, and it could come from anywhere to initiate to request it.
Right, can we, can we recommend that too after this?
Absolutely.
I know we all spoke about it.
Okay. There is one...
Right? Nobody up here, well, this guy, the couple having, did approve Soho, but look at the new stuff that we approved.
Apples and oranges.
Well, you care so bad, that was an existing historic building.
Yeah, but they added to it. And it was approved to add to it, 200, 300 units, before all of this.
Beyond that too...
I remember everybody gone in addition, this guy wasn't here.
Yes, you had it.
I'm not on the original vote that that addition happened.
I mean, this, the problem comes in, I think that building could have been really beautiful and all, like walking through it, the windows, the sights from the windows, absolutely stunning building. But it's just a matter of the details.
Do we do okay on Belmont Avenue? Because I know you disavowed it last meeting. You said we had nothing to do with Belmont Avenue.
I think you did okay with it.
Okay.
That's me saying it to you.
I don't think I was on it at that time.
No, no.
So it's not even about that, and listen, those units, by the way, Belmont Avenue, aren't they mostly leased up?
Yeah.
Yeah? Is it, is it...
Seven avenues.
Mostly leased up? So guess what? We just absorbed all of the inventory, all the new inventory already. And we won't see any new inventory for another year. And after that, another year and a half. So it's spread out, it's not...
Agreed. Listen, we can build maybe 50 more giant buildings and fill them up. The point is, do we want to be able to turn into 60,000 people in Canada?
It won't, it won't even, it won't go anywhere near that. It'll take three decades that you, you know, inch up 10,000. If it doesn't even ever do that, and it probably will never do that, you know? So...
I think though, what people aren't understanding, and Brian did some of this research that I'm reading now, of the 1,322 new units under construction or recently finished, 834 were approved prior to me, prior to anybody else.
I'd like to hear you say that.
So prior to me, so the fact that we're now overdeveloping the town somehow, just because these older buildings that were approved four or five years ago are now coming online, it's not reflective of what this board has done. Brian just eloquently said that. It's not because of our zoning. It's, there were 834 of them even before 2018, before we started changing the master plan and any of that.
That's not really true, because you changed a few, you changed, well, you amended motorcycle malls, now they coupled in size.
That was, that was considered into it. No, that was considered into that number. It was considered into that number. So basically, anything above the 834 is what they added. Yeah. Yeah. So it's there, but the point is, is it's not, it's not whether we do it or not, it's how we do it. It's doing, it's doing it so that...
Because we have to give a little credit to the previous administration at council level and at the planning board level, because we did have some projects on their way when you got here.
Yeah, of course.
Sometimes it insults me to hear you.
Belmont was, Soho definitely was.
I think Belmont was what sparked them to write that letter for Peds.
It's 500 units right there.
But they got to where they were because of the changes. Right? They got to where they were because of the changes, but not like Soho.
It's 500 units right there, there's two...
Listen, look at Little Williams Street. That's an example of what I'm talking about, Union Avenue, some of these buildings. We allowed 34 units where they really shouldn't have been.
And we beat that guy up, and he left here and came back and found more parking and had less units.
Yeah, but we know, it's really not, 34 units was still too big.
No, he's talking, he's talking about Williams and Washington, yeah. That guy, Williams and Washington.
Yeah, Williams now.
Williams and Washington, the big one he's talking about? That guy bought two more pieces of property. He had to change it to...
And he bought the factory below it. It wasn't the same footprint.
He bought more property. He's talking about...
We sent that guy out of here, and he, right, but we sent him out of here. We sent him out of here, he came back with less, less uses and more parking.
But even from the beginning, even from, Andy, even from the beginning.
That sounds like a teenager wants to come home at 10 o'clock and tells his parents, oh, can I come home at midnight? He's like, no, you better come home by 11.
Speaking of midnight, can we...
Yeah.
But Andy, to that actual project, Andy, the one that makes you so nervous? I think in the end, we did a better job than where we started. And I think that's going to be a nice building.
And I'll, and I'll stop speaking here for this.
That's okay.
On that project, I got a piece of mail with a picture of that building. And on the back was an advertisement to hire the guy who presented it, because after getting turned down twice on the planning board, a property he bought for $450,000 was now worth $1.5 million just with the approvals. So we're being sold. In a way, we're just being sold. You could come in town, buy two houses, put up 28 units, 39 units, some silly number, you get it approved. We did it to Torrey Electric on Washington Avenue. Everybody's just going to replace, and they're replacing four units with 34 units. That's, that becomes part of the density issue.
Yeah, so that value on Washington Avenue, first off, anything that you get, that you get approvals for, the approvals will add value to a property. It's any town, any place you go to, that's just how it is. And it doesn't mean that he's going to, you know, he comes in and he said, oh, well, you could build 90 units on this property like somebody's saying. It has to get approved. So somebody could try to go sell you on that? If you get sold on that, and without approvals, you're a sucker. You're an idiot.
We're doing a good job of approving, but that's the point.
Well, again, if there is, if there's nerves in that, Mary Ann has agreed to discuss all this with us and how to approach these things, and if we need to have those places, we will. It's not a shame to not fully understand stuff, so that's how...
Honestly, that's what, that's what happens after, you know, the, it's, no, no board member in any other towns I've worked in, nobody really knows immediately how things work or what, you know, what, what, what they approved is going to look like until they see it happen. And it's a learning experience, every single application is. But it's also the same for the applicants. So if they know going into a town, that that town is going to expect high-quality materials and they're not going to grant crazy bar notices, they won't apply for them after a while, or it gets out and then it becomes a little easier. At the beginning, though, they'll take their shot, and that's kind of what you're facing now. And so, I mean, I've seen, I haven't, I'm not familiar with a lot of the cases you're talking about, because I haven't reviewed them or worked on them, but I've worked on a couple, that I've seen that they, they kind of get the picture and they come back with a better product, change the parking, change the materials.
I don't know which.
Decrease the building, decrease the number of units. So they, they're starting to get the message. And the more that you guys work at it, which it's not easy to do, because it's always, it's always valid. But, you know, the more you work at it, the better, the better the quality you get.
The last piece of that is the fact that, like you said, it does increase the value of the land, it does increase the value of the property. That also increases the taxable value of all of that. And we're doing that at this board. We're not doing it at the council through redevelopment and pilot. We're getting it done at this board, which means these people are getting taxed. And they're not getting taxed under anything else. They're getting taxed at full tax. If they get it, that's not on us. We're, again, we're, we're pushing so to keep places out of redevelopment. I think if, the fact of the matter is, you look at those numbers, if, what, four, what is it, 400, 450 or whatever, was approved by this council total, through, since this council total, and only half of that was done through redevelopment? When you look at the previous administration, because of the way the zoning was, all 800 were done through redevelopment. We don't have to go through that route with everything anymore. And it is a benefit to us that we can do it this way. 245 at Soho, 230, 232 at Belmont. Previous approvals go for, and this wasn't, this wasn't redevelopment, because they didn't get there yet, I guess so. The 80 units that were approved at Williams and Washington, and then the 135 that were approved at Motorcycle Mall. And then you had Terry Street, that one was already on its way through. And that was another redevelopment area. So majority of it was redevelopment. That's, that's how they were getting stuff through. I'd rather, the way, my, my view on it, my view on it is that I'd rather force them into centralized locations on where they develop, and get them more likely to come to us than have to go to the council. Because if, if you're going to go get the persistent ones that get their big piece of land wherever they feel, wherever they want to do it, like Terry Street's off the avenue, right? And don't petition the council for redevelopment. And then it operates outside of our jurisdiction. And then it gets the 30-year, 28-year, whatever pilot. The way we've been doing it, we've actually pushed more this way than over to them. That's the only reason why we're doing what we're doing. We're doing it for the right reasons.
And that's, I just, my fear is in the end, it's just, when I look at what has happened since I've been on the board, from the last administration to this administration, they're just a little too big for my liking. It's just a little big. And I know more are proposed. I know we talked about eleven Franklin, and we talked about all these other areas. So if we continue down that road, to me, I think it's a mistake.
Eleven Franklin will be redeveloping that, we did do that.
But we were, is potentially to amend it.
Under redevelopment area, which again, we are just recommending, we're not doing anything else.
That's true.
We're not setting up, we're not, we don't work on the codes like we did over the summer. Totally different, it's not us, so...
Not us, I agree.
Anybody else in the board?
Just one thing, more retail and more parking.
Mr. Shelby?
More retail parking, that's what you need.
Michael Sheldon, 47th Place Street. I'll go through this quickly, because I can see everyone's getting exponentially tired. Beginning of Mary Ann's presentation tonight, she talked about how one of the changes in business zones, the BG and BA zones, will be the allowance of ground floor office space. The reason I'm mentioning this is that I know for a fact that the Board of Education, this lease of 335 Union Avenue, they've been in there since August of last year, they've never gotten a certificate of occupancy. So technically, they're illegally using the building. And the reason for it is that they're using ground, the ground floor for office space. That I, I know this for a fact, because Mr. Di Lorenzo has confirmed this with me. Unfortunately, he's not here. I know he's only...
Why is he here?
But, but in any case, the, the Board of Ed does not have CFO for 335 Union Avenue because of the need to now allow office use on ground floors. So when Mr. Conti said earlier that Mr. Mellon was conflicted in this, in some of these changes, it was, it was a demonstrable lie that Mellon, Mr. Mellon wasn't telling the truth. If these changes go through, the Board of Ed gets their CFO, and don't, they don't have to worry about the $500 a day fine. So I'll wait for Mr. Mellon to tell me I'm absolutely wrong, I don't know what I'm talking about, but...
Then yes.
Yeah, well, if, for your luck, you're lucky that Mr. Di Lorenzo isn't here, because he would...
Can we get him here?
He would readily confirm what I just said. They do not have a CFO. The reason for it is that ground floor office space is not permitted in the BA zone. And as Mr., as Mary Ann said earlier, one of the changes here is to allow office use on ground floors. So explain to me, Mr. Mellon, how you're not benefiting from this? You receive almost $3,000 a month for the lease agreement from the Board of Ed.
I can, I can answer that. I can answer that. I think you're misunderstanding the zoning, because there's two different classifications and there's two different zones. And it's confusing, so I'll explain it. Right now, in the BG zone on the avenue, business, professional, corporate offices are permitted. And in BA, they are not. One of the things that's being amended here is for the definition of retail, to make sure that service-oriented offices can also be incorporated in places where retail is permitted. Okay? So I think you're trying to mix in personal information and specific, let me finish, specific Board of Ed information on a specific interpretation that has to do with a CO application into zoning. You're taking an exact site with specifics that are not known for this hearing or for anybody, and there's no information on it. You're trying to say that there's a problem with something, and that's certain, that's definitely not the case.
I'm trying to...
Because, I could, no, 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 let me, let me, let me, let me finish. Professional offices that are being added is to make it very clear that in buildings of new construction, where residential is permitted above in multi-story levels, in the BA, it's in three stories, in the BG, I think it's five stories or six. But right now, offices are not permitted on the ground floor of just that type of new construction. They're already permitted in those zones clearly by the zoning office. The zoning office, what this change does, let me finish, what this change does is for buildings that have less than 10 units, they are again permitted in that new construction. It's a very specific, small, little change. And it has nothing to do with existing rental space for all these other professional uses, whether it's the mayor or anybody else. It has nothing to do with that, it has to do...
It has nothing to do with an existing zone.
Yes, exactly. It's only for new construction of multifamily buildings, and that's it.
As, as the BA zone is currently constituted, right now, at this very moment, the BA zones are, is office use on ground floor, on the ground floor permitted? Because if you say yes, then you have a major issue with our code enforcement officer, because he is, he, that's the very reason why he has not issued a certificate of occupancy in the Board of Ed to this day. And he has explained to me that the, these changes that are being proposed will make that type of use in the BA zone. Mr. Mellon's building at 335 Union Avenue is in the BA zone. That these changes will accommodate both the Board of Ed and Mr. Mellon as the owner of that building.
Isn't there other offices on Union Avenue on the first floor? There's a doctor's office, a lawyer's office?
Yeah, she owns office.
Yeah, she owns office. Aren't they all first floor?
Yeah.
Yeah, they are.
Well, I am, I am just, I am, I am repeating to you what Mr. Di Lorenzo has told me. Mr. Di Lorenzo has not issued a certificate of occupancy to the Board of Ed to this day. And if anyone knows the code, it's Mr. Di Lorenzo.
Is he here?
He's not here.
He had an emergency, so he's not here, but...
I have it right in front of me, actually, and it does permit school uses.
Yeah, but, but then, then you get into, pardon the French, another gray area, is the, the Board of Ed is using that for administrative space. That, that building, your building is not being used to give instruction to children, it's being used for administrative office space.
Okay, can we...
All right, well, we'll move on, we'll move on to that, but, but this, this, this has to be resolved, because when this comes before the council for second, for approval, Mr. Mellon is going to have to, we're going to have to make a decision whether or not he is conflicted in this matter, or he may have to recuse himself from the vote. So we're, it's going to be incumbent upon Mr. Di Lorenzo and other officials to make a ruling in this matter. So I just want that to go on record, that he may be...
I'm not going back, but if I may, when it comes up for a second reading, have Dr. Tomko there, because I think at the last board meeting, Dr. Tomko addressed this question.
He did, yeah. He did not have a CO because Mr. Di Lorenzo, they did all...
Same meaningless response as Mr. Mellon. He said, oh, schools are permitted everywhere, but that, but the building is not being used as schools, being used as a, as a...
He also said he's waiting for the state to give him paperwork, so he can file a CO.
So we're, we're going to have to get a ruling on this.
Thank you.
Maybe I'll have, I'll have more work from Mr. Katz. The, the next thing I wanted to mention, it's, I think this was already discussed, but this new permitted tandem parking situation, now you're going to allow three cars, three rows of three cars. So you're going to allow nine vehicles now to be squeezed into an area that would allow that many vehicles to be contained.
Where are you talking about?
In this, we've...
No, which, which district though?
I'm not, let me, let me see what you're talking about.
The definition, we, we, what we did was a definition of tandem parking. I don't think the rules on tandem parking changed. This actually came up, Jerry, at the, at the zoning board under one of, and that's how I caught it. One of the, one of the applicants was trying to say that there was a driveway along the side of the house, right? And he was gonna put three cars in that driveway and then he was gonna create driveway space in the backyard of the house and it had three more spaces.
I don't believe he had any driveway in the front. Everything was told, is this the case we just heard last week?
No, it was on Linden Ave, I think it was over the last year.
This was a couple of years ago, Jerry, I was on the board at the time, it was something that happened.
Was it, was it last, was it last year?
Linden Ave, oh, you're talk... No, the Linden Avenue case, if I remember, this was off of Graylock? Was this off of Graylock?
Yeah, Linden...
The ruling was whether it was a two or a three.
Alright, guys, guys, one at a time, she's trying to, you know, you're wanting, you have your own conversations, one at a time.
Anyway, all the tandem parking, all it was is clarifying the definition so that people didn't try to play games with it. They, what they were doing was they're saying, well, I have a driveway down the side of my house that leads to the back of my house. I went with three cars there and then three cars in the back of my house. But that's six cars, but all the cars, there was only one way out. So there was six cars, six cars, but he said, well, it's separated. They were, they are even persisted for, I don't know how long over the definition of tandem parking. So this is a clarification for anyone who has to use it.
We would not approve it for three family.
Who are you? Get up, state, state your name, your address, so she can, she doesn't even know who's talking.
Oh, okay. Jerry Zonger, show, Eight Grove Street, the chairman of the zoning board. The case he's talking about, if I'm, if I'm correct with this case, the guy wanted to change it to a three family from a two. We knocked them down.
Yeah.
And part of it had to do with, like you said, he wanted to put all the cars all lined up.
And that doesn't work.
And we said no.
Yeah, it doesn't work.
And you only have a two, you don't have a three, you never, legally had a three. He had bought that property, I think at a tax sale, and foreclosed. And he was trying to make it into a three, and we said no.
That's it, so literally that's all it was, clarifying so that nobody could try to play the word games with you. Very, very, very specific.
I think that issue's been solved, can we move on?
So you're not, you're not, you're not allowing three stalls of three cars? That's not gonna be an allowed, allowed use in even certain zones. You're not going to allow what I'm gonna euphemistically call the Mellon Banda Tic Tac Toe Parking Matrix. Or is that gonna become, is that gonna become a commonplace thing in the township if these, these changes go through? Where we're gonna have rigs of nine cars in the backyards of...
Let me answer you, Mr. Sheldon, let me answer you.
So what's already allowed is what's already allowed. This is only clarifying that definition. There's also very specific curb cut sizes for each size lot. So if there's no way to get it done, there's no way to get it done on certain lots, so. Short answer, maybe, but only on large lots, I don't know.
This, this makes it stricter. It, it does not allow you to stack multiple cars in tandem on a property and have it count towards the parking requirement. So it prohibits what you're worried about.
All right, well, thank you, I'll, we'll be monitoring that. Uh, the next thing, I, just as a quick follow up to, a concern that Mario addressed, which seems in my opinion as well to be spot zoning changes on three corners along Union Avenue, Belville Avenue, Union, Graylock and Union, and what was, where was the other? O'Drillman and Union, but there's already a building there. But I want to ask, on the corner of Graylock and Union, any chance that a couple of gentlemen who may or may not own The Whiskey Priest may be interested in, in developing that, that particular corner property?
They own that piece of property, but I don't know whether or not they want it.
They own it already, or, because I heard that there were...
Which one? They own something in that area, right in that corner over there, I don't know what.
I heard that they own a couple of properties, but there's some other corners that are not selling or sell.
That doesn't have anything to do with the zoning.
All right, well, I just wanted to throw that out. One second, I have my pages. This was already mentioned by Mario, the, the, what seems to be now permitted basement apartments. I, I think all of us remember, it just happened last September when we got hit by Hurricane Ida and we had the torrential eight plus inches of rain in, in several hours. There were numerous reports, New York City, Elizabeth, elsewhere, where basement, illegal basement apartments got completely flooded almost instantly and entire families were wiped out, children as well. They all, there was no means of, secondary means of egress, they couldn't get out.
That's something that Mario is addressing.
That's what, that's what he's addressing.
Illegal, illegal means two entrances, so.
Right, well, it's still, you know, that gets in another gray area, what having a legal basement apartment. You're, I think you're just opening up a hornet's nest by...
We're not having illegal basement apartments, but that was addressed, so what's the next one?
All right, well, one, one second, I have my pages. The, let's see, this is page sixteen. Again, this is just piggybacking onto what Mario mentioned. There's one section here that it says that, uh, all signs not specifically listed. This is eighteen twenty-three dash twenty-three dash seventeen point three prohibited signs. Let me just whack my whistle. It says amend this section to delete the following text. All signs not specifically listed as permitted signs are prohibited. Prohibited signs include but are not limited to the following. You're deleting, you're deleting this section and it's internally illuminated box signs. If I remember correctly, last fall, and this was mentioned, one of our other council members who happens to have a business on Main Street in the State Fair complex wanted exactly this type of sign. And she had voted to introduce the ordinance to allow this. And then when it was brought up in public at the second reading, in public hearing, that she was conflicted, she had to recuse herself, she had no choice. You know, she would have had a little extra time that night to file her financial disclosure forms, but that's another, another issue. But she, the vote, the vote wound up three, 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 tied. And she, as a result, she didn't get her sign. But it seems that deeply buried in this is a provision, you're removing something that would now automatically gave, give her her box sign. And it's something that we'll, we'll have to address in the public hearing and this goes before the council.
I would like to address that.
Yes.
Since it's, there's, seems to be questions on it, I believe I already spoke about this. When, when the sign ordinance was amended several years ago, there was a sunset clause for box signs. Box signs were the permitted illuminated sign and, and actually channel letters were as well. And what ended up, what ended up getting adopted was a sunset clause for these box signs that were illuminated in their old school, they're, they're not attractive. They generally, they, they don't add to the value or the beauty of the street for sure. And right now, that, those box signs were the only permitted sign that was internally illuminated, which is an unrealistic sign ordinance. It, it, it does not, it, it, it doesn't make any sense. If you want to have a vibrant Main Street and a vibrant Avenue, you have to permit the types of signs that businesses, modern businesses expect to have. And, and I'm the one who recommended adding the illuminated channel letters in a way that has a diffused light source, which is what I've, I've encountered in lots of other towns that, and modern developments. So since the sunset clause has come to be on the box signs, it now makes sense to adopt the channel letter signs with the diffused light source and that's what's being proposed here. It's not for any particular person, it's not for any particular, there's no agenda. It's basically what makes sense for the avenue.
All right, well, I understand your, your, your comments, but we'll have to, well, when this, when this gets before the council, have to see if Mr. Penya may be conflicted as well that some of these changes would accommodate...
I just gotta say, on top of that, on top of that, a lot of the businesses in that strip mall that you're speaking of and the strip malls along Main Street use those signs. So if we don't allow it, that kind of hurts every single one of those businesses. So there's certain things that maybe we can play games with. I know it's, it's, you know, election season, but I don't think we should be hurting businesses in town.
It's not election season, I, I'm, I've been on this campaign for, for years. And by the way, I'm not old Belville, I only started really getting involved with Belville Matters around two thousand and ten. So, you know, I want to put that little contention to rest. Lastly, you won't be happy, I'm on my last question, I think, yeah, this is my last one. On page twenty-three, amendments to chapter twenty, site plan ordinance, you are making an exception to twenty dash one dash point one. But part two of this, it's section B, part two, this has me very concerned. Let me just read this to you and then you can comment. It says, "Site plan review shall not be required for interior renovations related to changes in tenancy, provided the proposed use is permitted and no additional parking required by the change in use." Now, why is this a concern to me? Because these last few years with all of these monolithic buildings going in, during the testimony, I would usually ask, in addition to how, what the, what the impact on the school would be, the applicant would say, well, no, because these are all gonna be one bedroom apartments and one bedroom apartments don't, don't produce school age children, which is not true, but I won't go into that argument now. But with all of these cookie cutter site plans, I pointed out in, in many of these instances that these one room bedroom apartments are separated usually just by a simple stud wall. And you take out that wall and now you've got yourself a two bedroom apartment, which is definitely amenable to the production of school age children. And it seems to me that this is kind of a sub rosa back door, means here two...
I think, Mr. Sheldon, I think the way it was written was anything over twenty-five hundred square feet had to come, renovation had to come before.
So then that's specifically commercial, right?
Yeah, this, what you're reading from, you're reading a B two, site plan review number four, interior renovations.
Twenty-three, right?
Yes, and that is an existing component of the ordinance. This, this, the way these, the way this amendment is crafted is it shows the section and the existing language. And the change to the language is either in a strike through or bold italics. So this, the language that you're reading that is in regular print already exists in the ordinance. The bold is the new.
So if somebody has a commercial space with twenty-five hundred square feet, presently they have to come before us, is that gonna remain the same or no?
Yeah, this isn't changed, that all, there's no change to any of those thresholds. The only thing that's changing here was the, being specific about the, the makeup of the subcommittee. That's, that's the only change to that section.
It's not like having the commercial people come before us.
Yes, there, there's, there's no change to that.
But again, that's just, it's commercial, he's suggesting that it's, it's not, it's not residential. That would be a change of use and I can't do that.
I don't see the saying here, I, I'll review this again. I'll, I'll, I'll honor your, your words here, but I don't see this saying only commercial. I just see this as a generic statement, it's bold, so it means it's new, as you just said. And it just, it just, it seems to indicate that developers could, without having to, to get any, any permits or any permission, start going into their existing buildings, taking out walls and making two bedroom apartments out of the one.
It doesn't apply, it's, it's not residential. Anybody else in the audience, Mr. Frant Antonio?
Yes, I'll try to be brief, but one, let me give you a compliment first, if, if actually true. You're gonna allow more pervy share?
Yeah, that's what we're, we're trying for, absolutely.
I hope we go back to thirty percent because we're a river community, as you know. Every square inch, we pay our...
Yeah, Mayor said we're hiring an engineer and we're, we're looking into ways to improve it. Yep.
Well...
I agree with you there, a hundred percent.
Which means you're being hired.
We need more and we have to decrease the density. We used to have twenty-five units per acre in the late, until late eighties, right? And people, and we had a beautiful town. We had nice residential areas, we had beautiful Washington.
This book of Carter can show you, she showed me at the beginning of the meeting, some of the existing structures in town and the density in town. Some of them were up to a hundred and sixty units per acre.
No more building, no more...
So she could show you that.
So a lot of those buildings are...
I'll tell you, I'll tell you where one is, right there in the corner, a seven story apartment, built in nineteen twenties when nobody had cars. And we had a trolley, the tractor's still out front. So don't say now what happened. You keep saying you gotta move with the times. Those buildings were built because people didn't have automobiles. We had the trolley cars and see, I don't know if Mike Perone's still here, some of the pictures, you see the horse and buggy. My grandfather owned the chandelier property, he built that two family next door. In the twenties, Frank and me was the dirt road. So let's, let's be real, let's hear what we got here.
Right.
But I have fifty-five years of tax bills, which my wife don't like me saving. But we had very, without all this big development, we had very little taxing costs.
I disagree with you there, but go ahead.
Well, I have the bills to prove, you know?
I've paid taxes thirty-five years old, bought my house, I've paid eighteen hundred, paying eleven thousand.
Well, now, Jack, mine was five oh five when I bought it, I'm not paying ten thousand. But I'm talking about then, when we didn't have all of that. And we had a beautiful Washington Avenue, which we still have. The last two Sundays, my wife, two hours deep Sunday we walked. There is, there's one empty store.
We're trying to get tired.
There's one empty store. You have plenty of restaurants, all kinds of ethnicities, right?
I disagree, I think Washington Avenue needed improvement, it's getting improvement. So I disagree with you there, but go ahead.
Can we be specific to this ordinance?
Yeah, that's it, I want the pervy share. Now, with the basement apartments, you can't allow them, you can't allow them. We have them, I live on Mount Prospect between Holmes and Leslie. We got eleven houses, four illegal basement apartments.
And those are still illegal. Those are still illegal, you can still call on them, you can still tell them to get them out of there. They're still illegal.
And you can't go in somebody's house. We've got one, two doors away from me, they kept telling me, I gave them the address, they can't tell, look, I've been doing it too long time, they kept telling me it's illegal. What happened? A Wednesday night after a town meeting, I go to bed at midnight, see the whole street lit up red. All three firemen, trucker there, twelve firemen. The illegal basement apartment, the old guy at the first floor, illegal attic, two little kids on the second floor, four and seven, were called, right? So they called, that's when we got it. When the fire department and the police department went in there and all...
So it's gone now, it's gone now.
Now, because two months later, he rented them again.
See, this, this is the story that I remember, this is the story we were just talking about.
You have to complain, Mr. De...
Yeah, no, yeah.
But you, you gotta manage. Well, my son, forty-eight, I mean sixteen, wanted to renovate the basement, the reg room. Yeah, we drew up plans, this were my beds, no, it ain't beds, it's gonna be a rec room. Now, so to this day, my basement is unfinished. Because I'm not gonna allow my children to sleep in a basement where there's boilers and hot water heaters and you don't know what could happen, all that. There was a basement apartment, East Orange, about six, seven years ago, around the corner from where I used to live, three people died in the basement.
We agree with you, but let's stick to the word of its changes.
Well, that's it.
Okay, so...
Your kids, I told you about basement apartment. You're not allowed, that's in the ordinance, isn't it?
It's on the record, it's noted.
Well, it's...
Any other portion of the ordinance? Is there any other issue?
With the B though, what's your problem? Why do you cut me off and nobody else?
I'm not cutting you off.
You know, you've been very quiet with the other speaker. Now, please sit back and relax, I know you're tired, you wanna get home, you know?
Because it's been brought up six times already, so now, this is the set, eight, nine.
I've given you the reasons why.
We heard the reasons, we heard the same reasons as the other reasons. They're dangerous, people die, there's fires, it's unsafe. How many times are we gonna hear it? Now, I'm not saying to you, but I'm saying like, are you all gonna get up and say the same thing?
Yes, I'll tell you why. Because whenever there's a court case on an issue and all that, they go to the record of the hearing. And so what happens, an opposing attorney say, hey, look, the hell the public hearing? Only one person spoke up.
That's not true.
So that's why you have to get as many people...
That's not true, that's not true. You're actually all, all...
Will you stop interrupting me, please, and also leave back...
But I think on, on top of that, I think if you could just set up, get up and say, I don't like it for the reasons that they said and you, then you're voicing your opinion, you're voicing that you don't like it or that you don't want it, we don't have to, we don't have to fight.
No, I've given you legitimate reasons why you shouldn't do it.
So did they, and...
Because you keep bringing these things up, that one room apartments, one of the, I told you, my tenants, one room apartment, nine by thirteen bedroom, young couple moved in. A year later, had a baby, two years later, had another baby. They lived there eight years, one bedroom apartment with four people. You got a customer mind on to a young girl, because of your water increase, the landlord rented her, raised her rent from fifteen hundred to nineteen hundred dollars. Guess what? She's got four roommates, she goes to college downtown. Four girls in a one bedroom apartment, about four blocks from here, all right? So when you're telling these millennials, only gonna live, only one person in the house and all that, and, well, you gotta pay attention to what you're doing.
You're paying attention.
You can't do it. And the other thing is just with this tandem parking, you're not gonna go, they just built...
They just clarified the wording, Mr. Frant Antonio, they're not allowing it any place it wasn't allowed.
You've got twenty-three, Mount Prospect Avenue, you remember old Diddy The Fail, remember her? She had nice lot next door, could park six, eight cars. They subdivided the new owner, they built a duplex there on every square inch of the land. You know, you gotta see how narrow. The owner, and again, we say complaints, I've given the pictures, I told the chief in there. I guarantee you, go there now, the car is parked right up to the garage door.
This wording doesn't apply to that.
Blocking the sidewalk and the curb. Every single night and most of the day. So when you say that you need garages, and you gotta face it, garages are no longer for cars. Where do you put your lawnmowers, you know, you never pay attention to lawnmowers and, and lawn equipment and other stuff that people might have there.
Why is not going forcefully doing it?
Because it's not being reported.
When they're reported, they're being handled, as he said.
They come and complain at the meeting and then they...
And then they come back, so...
Yeah, then next point, Mr. Frant Antonio?
Some of the garages, you know, why isn't it, the car been parked across the sidewalk every night? The other thing, nobody enforces anything. You, you allow the restaurant, I, I'd like outdoor dining, sidewalk ninety. But look at O'Drillman Street, the restaurant there, they blocked off, they put the railing thirty-one inches from the hydrant. Handicap wheelchair requires forty inches, how does that allow it to happen? So you've got all these things there. And, and, and just as a, you know, all this redevelopment, I invite you all, Matthew Boxer, the former state controller, the Boxer report. All this redevelopment has hurt the average citizen. And has done nothing to, to, to increase our, our taxes are going through the roof because of all these developments. Look at Bloomfield, my son's got a two thousand dollar entry.
Let's stick to this application, Mr. Frant, we're, we're volunteer board here and you're really just taking up our time. You really are. I don't care about your kid in Bloomfield, I got news for you. You got something about this application? You're here to listen, not about your son's taxes. You're here to listen, now about your son's taxes?
These are all about the application.
What is it specifically about this application? You make volunteers not want to volunteer.
The pervious?
Yes, you addressed the pervious, we're gonna address the...
That's in there. The basement apartments, is that about this application?
They want to legalize, make, do, wait, illegal's still illegal, we're not legalizing illegal apartments.
And we're not, we're not creating, we're not creating any new changes to that.
We don't allow basement apartments now, under this ordinance you are.
Under certain criteria, with two exits...
Exactly, so you aren't allowing them, no, no basement apartments.
Okay, that's your opinion, thank you. Anything else?
You guys, you know, I don't know if there's different sized handcuffs that they have, or if they're all adjustable, but I'm seeing them come soon.
Mr. Duggan, should you have much to say, because our stenographer needs a break, if we're gonna just talk nonsense, we have to take a break.
Oh, no, 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 okay. I have a question, now, based on these basement apartments currently, doesn't any basement apartment that's legal, I'm talking about that's legal, have to be no deeper than a cer, or a certain percentage beneath ground level? Am I correct, or am I not correct?
The way the zoning, the way the zoning currently reads is the basement apartments have to comply with, and I have to find it, they have to comply with the, the current building code, and all the safety, window access, and, and, and ingress and egress requirements of the code. And that is already in the zoning ordinance. The component that was changing had to do with the third unit over a garage. That's, that's what's, so there's...
It was to make basement apartments legal, you just said.
They're, they're already...
They already are, if you, if you do it legally on certain size lots, in certain ways...
Alright, let me ask you a question then, you said two means of egress, is it two means of door egress, or a second mean could be two a window?
It, it's, it's as a special safety window as per the building code, and, and it's specific in this ordinance, as per the building code.
But under the current ordinance, you can only go down so deep, am I correct or not? There's a certain percentage, I remember, these comes before our, our board all the time.
It, it would still have to qualify, it would meet, it would still have to meet any, any underground occupancy limitations, and if they didn't meet that, it wouldn't be permitted.
Okay, so you're not changing that?
No, absolutely not.
Now, let's go to Union Avenue. A number of years ago, you changed the zone on Union Avenue to what? B-Y?
B-A.
B-A. Now, that went north for the length of Union Avenue, did it not stop at Graylock?
Uh, it, it, uh, no, it goes to the edge of Campbell.
It don't go to Graylock?
It goes past Graylock, to the edge of Campbell, and that's it, that's there, and then it goes the other way.
Currently?
The B-A?
Yeah, currently.
It's been that way.
I thought it stopped at Graylock.
That's just, it's just the corner where the district starts.
Well, the corner where the district starts, at Graylock, but I'm saying, it's only the south side of Graylock, wasn't it?
No, it goes to...
Because I remember looking at the map.
It goes to Campbell, those are big apartment buildings on Campbell, that are right there.
Past, past Graylock, going north, going north now.
Going north towards another.
Yes.
On that side of the street, because there are parks there.
On the right side of the street, there are big apartments.
Okay.
And we get it.
So now, what is changing on these corners? What corners are we talking about?
What's changing is the, is the table notes and the four corners that, that are listed on the table notes.
What are the four corners, please?
We, we've actually discussed this before.
Yeah, we already did.
Well, you discussed four corners, but you don't specify, because she said, she said it a lot more times.
That's already...
Four times she said it tonight, but...
Which corners are we talking about?
Union and Dralaman, and Double Avenue and Union...
Graylock, Union.
Wait, 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 let her talk, I can't hear everybody's voice, let her talk, please.
Double Avenue and Union Avenue, Dralaman and Union, Graylock and Union is, are the, are the locations.
Why is it changing at Graylock and Union if it's already okay there?
What this does, what's changing here is that four stories are permitted only on the major corners of those specific corners, three stories are permitted everywhere else in that zone.
So what you're saying is everything is currently three stories, and this is raising those corners to four stories?
No, everything's four stories introducing everything except for those four.
Yes.
Except for those.
Except for those, those three corners.
So technically then, where they're building across the street from the Whiskey Priest wouldn't be permitted anymore?
Three stories.
That's four.
Whiskey, across from Whiskey Priest is three.
You're seeing it as three?
You're seeing the elevator shaft that leads to the roof.
Yes.
Yeah, that's not a story, that's the shaft that leads to the roof.
You're telling me the elevator opens on the roof then?
Yes.
How is that...
The elevator, the elevator shaft has, has extra room on the roof level for the motor, so it's higher than the, the building itself.
So there's kind of two levels of residential, or three? So it's three over one?
Two over one.
No, two over one, two over one.
Two over one, I just said it.
Anything else? Anything else, Mr. Duggan, sir?
No, that's it. I didn't waste much...
Mr. Fleyce, want something brief, please?
Absolutely, I promise that's relevant.
Forty-seven seconds, I'll give you that.
Absolutely, she's making gap.
You mentioned something about an addendum, now, is that an addendum to your presentation, or is that an addendum to the ordinance?
This is additional standards and clarification, basically, of the standards. So there's some text added that further clarifies the definition of dwelling duplex, a duplex dwelling, and a, a two-family home. Because it, some of the members found it confusing, and so, so we, we adjusted the definition to make it more clear.
So, Mr. Mayor, Councilor Graziano, am I to understand that if there's, if there's change to the text and sort of thing, would the original ordinance be reintroduced and re-advertised and re-voted on?
No, but that, I'm not even gonna answer that now, because it's got nothing to do with this one.
Okay, that's fine.
I, she's saying her head now, so I'm not an attorney, she's saying...
Yeah, it's, it's up to the attorneys, if there's no substantial change, then it can go forward.
Thank you.
And since this is for clarification purposes, it doesn't change the actual regulation, it should be able to go forward.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public?
Really quickly, Brian, like, what prevents that building on Union from going four stories? If, if the zoning right now allows it?
Harvey. Yeah, I don't know.
If there's no further questions from the public, we'll close the public portion. Mr. Graziano, did you have a statement?
Yeah, no, just, yeah, yeah, just a question, it has nothing to do with what we're voting on, so you can say now?
Yeah, say now.
Okay, to our attorney, do you have the authorization as an attorney to certify any one of us sitting up here for taking the NJPO test?
Yes, yes, I can go over, yeah, I can certify, I could do a class, certify a couple of people at one time, or one person, sure.
So that could be, okay, great, thank you.
Anybody else on account of...
Mr. Chairman, I just, I don't wanna be the dead horse, but with these basement apartments, I don't know if everybody read Michael Sheldon article on double taxes. I think when Belville residents are being taxed fairly, I think then you'll see illegal apartments maybe disappear. Illegal apartments, I think people, most people in Belville have them so they could afford to live here. Most people, I don't think, have the money to pay so they subsidize with an illegal apartment to pay their taxes. And that's how I feel, you know, I own a one-family house, I think I'm very overtaxed, and I, I contemplate it all the time, and I, you know, I, I got a full basement in my house, and I know I can make it compliant and make it a, a legal basement, but I think until, until we're fairly taxed in Estes County, our, our issue with apartments in the basement will never go away.
Thank you. Any other board members like to make a statement before we close the meeting and take a vote? Someone like to make a motion to accept the ordinance amendments that were discussed tonight with Mary Ann?
What makes the motion? What's the name?
Please go a roll.
Chairman Mira.